So, welcome everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 25th, Plump and Board of Selectment meeting. We usually don't meet in this room. We're expecting a bit of a crowd tonight. So, we're playing a little with our microphones and getting used to them again. So, forgive us on that. We'll start by reminding everyone that this meeting is being recorded for Cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. And we are thankful that they're here. We are thankful that the print media is here as well. The video for this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. We will remind everyone now and then later on, anyone in the audience that's speaking, would you please state your name and ideally your street address as well so people will know who you are. The agenda has been published. Are there any additional items that people would like us to consider for discussion tonight? Okay. So, the way this meeting's going to work is we have an appointment at 6:15 to meet with the school committee and the FINCOM. And then at 7 o'clock, we have time to seek public input on a proposed marijuana grow facility. So, in between those, we'll deal with the other business at hand. So, we have about 10 minutes to deal with other issues. And I think we'll dispense with the ground rules. We'll save those mostly for 7:00 PM. We will have just a moment of silence to use in any way to prepare for the meeting and Okay. So, again, welcome everyone. So, let's dive in. First order of business is the Town Personnel Policy and Procedure Document that we've been working on for many months. And we had an addition or a correction or a polishing of the wording that I think you did. Is that the thing that is highlighted? Is that the only thing?
The thing that's highlighted is one. The other one was we got rid of some terminology about unpaid leave, you know, something like because it doesn't apply to us. So, that is the only real change.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, do we want to put this up for the 10-day review process just in case there are any input?
Sure.
All right. So, we'll have Dale do that tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll remove the highlight and I'll email it to you and Dale so that you've got a clean copy to post for tomorrow morning.
The only other question I had is this is referred to as an introduction and it doesn't really seem to be an introduction to me. And I wonder if we actually need a little verb that says this policy, this book is meant to cover personal policies for employees and yada, yada, yada.
And maybe that it's an ongoing document.
Don't we put something together and email it to you guys and have a term for what we'll talk about next week or?
Talk about it next week. Maybe at that point, we had talked about having Town Council do a quick perusal and maybe we'd be ready for that next week.
I think that, I'd like to see all of the policies that we've talked with put together and us actually look at them first and then take them from Town Council just so we're sure that we can overlook something.
Yeah, good idea. Most of all, the policies came from Town Council. So, it really should be a big project for them to review it.
So, maybe can we ask Dale to put the whole thing together into one document that we look at for next week?
Yeah. Just because we've had a lot of revisions and, you know, if one of them didn't get in or something, we'll make sure.
So, Bree, can you communicate that to Dale? If he has any questions, he can give me a yell and this would be really good because we'll move it toward completion. So, introduction. Okay. Good on that? Okay. So, any other policy or procedures to add? I think we were feeling like there might well be, but that we've made good progress and we'll come back to it another time.
Yeah, I think we've got enough more to move on from this one.
I think you're right. Okay. Next item is a request for more time with Town Council which is needed concerning a John Henry Continuing Freedom of Information Act request. And just in brief, Open Space Committee, Community Preservation Committee Chairs were served with a Freedom of Information Act request last August. My name is Mr. Henry. I'm Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I turned over 1,200 pages of documents. This related to the exploration of a possible person to participate for. I think Linda Levy, who is the co-chair of the Open Space Committee, has turned over at least 100 emails. He's written an additional request that all members of those committees share any other information and some requests about signing an affidavit. And I think at this point, I need a little time with Town Council to understand how to go about that and exactly what's required. I'm more than glad to share all my stuff. At some point, I'm not sure the degree to which the Chair of the committee has to be asked out of the committee members. So, it should be a brief conversation. There's a lot I could say about this and a lot of frustration about the time that's going into this for a project that's not completed. But my request would be from you that I have a few minutes for Town Council.
I'm a little concerned about the act of that because there are so many documents. You know, if something were overlooked and then that can be backed away by somebody else. I think that's important.
I'm more than glad to testify that I have given over every single piece of paper and every single document I can find. I can't testify about anyone else. And I don't know to what degree the Freedom of Information Act applies. So, just whatever we need to turn over, we'll turn over. It's taking up time. It's taking up time, money, speaking to Town Council. But it is part of the transparency. It is the Freedom of Information Act.
All right. I'll make a motion to authorize you to contact the Town Council on this matter and then you'll just let the other chairs know what she recommends.
Yep. Yep. I have checked with Linda and yeah, we'll definitely let her know as well. Hopefully, we can bring this to a conclusion so we can pass it pretty quickly.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, we had next on the agenda are the Board of Selectment Budget Request Preparations. Unfortunately, Dale's doing most of that and he was called away somewhat unexpectedly on another urgent matter. So, I'm not sure we can move forward on that.
No.
So, we'll have that discussion next week. I think that we're getting very close to the deadline on submission of that to FINCOM. But they probably don't meet next until the 8th, so we probably have a little run there.
I can't remember the date. Was it the 15th that they wanted everything or was it sooner than that?
I thought it was sooner. I may be wrong.
You know, it might be that it's the 5th because it, was it after our community movement plan, our meeting with the community board that people? I think it was pretty close to that actually.
I know we meet with them at the end of the month, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll let FINCOM know that we are on topic.
February 5th. Thank you, Maureen. February 5th.
Okay. All right. So, next is Town Car Maintenance Expenses. And actually, I put this on because Dale knows about this. There's a $300 bill floating around and it's a little unclear whose budget that's supposed to come from.
What's it for, Dale?
Some kind of minor maintenance and repairs. But maybe that's going to have to sit until Dale comes back next week. And I think maybe we don't have a policy on that and maybe we have to find it. I believe the fire department has been taking care of it. And if I'm understanding correctly, I think that bill, they're handing it over either to Dale or the police. I'm not sure. In any event, I guess that'll have to come out next week.
Okay.
Wow, we're getting through these by kicking them down the road pretty good. So, waiting for FINCOM, might as well go on. Community Block Development Grant Application is Art. Anything on that?
As I understand it...
Sorry. Art, can you give your name and address, please? And actually, speak loudly. We will have a microphone for the audience at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Art Morin. And as I understand it, I spoke with Deb Anderson and she said that she passed the information along to the Planning Board Chairman. So, which, they're the, that's the group that would have to apply for the grant and then it would come back to the Board of Selectment and if it were granted and then be appropriated by the Board.
So, as I understand it, this is an exploration of a potential grant to help with a failing septic system. It's a little challenged by the expenses and efforts are being made to be helpful and...
That is correct.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Solar Updates. That probably is Dale's territory. Anything from you? Okay. Well, we might as well dive into the first part of our goals and priorities until FINCOM comes. You want first crack at that, Public Safety?
Oh, gosh. I don't want first crack at that.
We did meet last week. We will be meeting again this coming week at 6 o'clock. Everyone, divided. We are going to talk about the process for hiring consultants which will include input from the Board of Selectmen. So, my suggestion is going to be that we form a three-person subcommittee to review. So far, we've had 18 companies respond. They need more information before they can give us, you know, a really good response. That is supposed to go out tomorrow morning. And then we, I hope to form the subcommittee to review those applications, window it down to maybe five, bring that back to the whole committee and hopefully have, either have all three of us there or have Christine be okay with the two of us making a decision on hiring this person. We do post those meetings as Board of Selectment meetings as well.
What's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is this Wednesday. We won't have that information then. So, it'll either be the following Wednesday, which will be the 2nd of February, or the 9th. I don't, I don't know when we'll get all of the information in.
Okay. I should be able to make it. I'll make an hour to it.
I guess all three of us would be.
I can make every Wednesday except the 10th.
Wednesday's the 10th?
Yeah.
Wednesday's the 9th. Okay.
So, that one I wouldn't be able to be at.
So, either we do it on the 3rd or we do it on the 7th.
Okay. Okay. Harry?
Maureen, is Dale going to be available any time this week at all?
He, I believe he's having regular hours. Other than this evening, he wasn't able to be here.
Okay. Because I, that information hasn't been forwarded to me yet. I've called him and left a message that I haven't received. Any of you?
He told me today that he had emailed them to you and you didn't receive them.
No. As of 2:00 afternoon, I still don't have them yet.
Okay. I will leave a note for him. Will you be available tomorrow morning?
Sure.
And why don't you give me your phone number afterwards and I'll make sure he has it.
I left that in my email address with, I guess...
With Bree? Oh, okay. Then he has it. Just give it to him first thing in the morning.
Okay.
What time does he normally commence?
If he didn't respond to you yet?
Pardon me?
He didn't respond to you from the email?
Not as of 3, 4:00 afternoon.
Do you want to see me again after this and then I'll take your information again because I discussed that too.
So, I will just mention that the annual Mass Municipal Association meeting last week, the Massachusetts Selectmen Association meeting, the whole meeting was about municipal buildings. And I haven't had a chance to really go through my notes and I'll try to type that up for us. You know, it was very much municipal buildings from the selectmen's perspective. The two things I came out of it with, if I didn't already sort of intuit this, is what a long, complicated process it is and all of them, even on the simplest of buildings, making clear that it tended to be a multi-year thing. And then one thing that I didn't fully understand, but that for any project over $1.5 million, we are required by the state to hire an OPM, owner's program, our owner's project manager. Which sounded onerous, but the people involved were very impressed the degree to which that person, particularly for the selectmen, became the person that could discuss the pros and cons with every step along the way. I think maybe this project isn't going to be $1.5 million, but I was impressed by the advantages pretty early in the process of having someone like that that was able to lead us and educate us along the way. So, just mention that in passing and I'll try to type up my notes and get them to you guys this week. Okay. So, we'll take a break from some of our projects and priorities. I see that FINCOM has arrived and we're appreciative you guys are here. And we see that Maureen Springer, the, from the school committee, is here. So, this is an opportunity, as I understand it, to talk about the upcoming budget process and the possible sale of land as well.
Sale of land.
And the maintenance issues.
The building envelope report that we had done. And I think you received a copy of it.
Let me see if I can give you this microphone. Testing. Yeah. Would you like that?
Never known to be quiet.
Sure, all right.
So, we're asking, just a reminder for everyone that speaks along the way, please your name, particularly for the print media and your street address if you want.
Sure. I'm Maureen Springer. I live on 26 Granville Baker Way and have for 34 years amazingly. The first item that I wanted to bring to the attention of the selectmen was that last week, or the last, the 14th, I believe, the Silver Lake Regional School Committee agreed to sign a purchase and sales agreement with the town of Kingston for five acres of property that belongs to Silver Lake right now. The sales contingent upon all three towns at town meeting agreeing to it. And then the money would be split up as per the percentage of each town. One of the, one of the highlights of the purchase and sales agreement is that the town of Kingston is going to donate their percent of the sale back to the school committee to be used for capital expenditures only. And I think that's what clinched the committee agreeing to it. So, this is just sort of a letting you know they'll, that Kingston is having a town meeting February 2nd to address this. And I believe that's really the first step. If they don't get approval on that, the whole thing goes away. But I wanted to let you know, and this is, this is the, this is the, this is the land that we own, including the yellow. And what we're talking about is, this is the frontage on 27. And we come in over here and take a piece right there. We retain frontage on 27. We insist on that and retain about 15 acres of land.
So, they're at the far end.
Yeah, they're at the far end. It's wet over here, so we told them they had to take that to work on a, you know, we don't want a piece here and a piece there. So, they're fine. They said they need about four acres of land.
And this is for a...
Police station.
Police station.
Yeah.
Okay. What do you know the sale price is?
$250,000. It was done by an independent, or these are out of brain training.
So, Kingston voted that their portion would go back to the school committee?
That's what the purchase and sales agreement says.
Oh, I had heard it that it would go to the other two towns, but obviously not.
No. It's to be donated back to the Silver Lake School Committee for the purpose of capital expenditures.
And what would that represent in dollars? Maureen, what is our portion of this 250?
About 11%.
So, that I can do the math?
Twenty-five, $30,000.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, we're waiting on Kingston?
Pretty much. The, I received a copy of the purchase and sales agreement on my email today. It's a draft copy, 30 pages long, so I didn't quite get through it all. But it has, it has the points that we wanted in it that we did. We've been negotiating this for six months, so a lot of back and forth that we've really done our due diligence as to what, what could happen with it.
So, you think the Silver Lake School Committee is on board?
I think because of the protections we've put in the agreement for us and what the facility is going to contain, it's not, it's not going to have a gun range or anything like that. They may do canine training. But yeah, I mean, the Chief, Chief Swain in Kingston has been wonderful about giving us information. I know that Chief Dillon supports it and I believe Chief, I don't know about Halifax, but I believe that they support it as well.
So theoretically, the other steps after that would be Halifax Town Meeting and Plump and Plump.
That's right.
And they don't expect us to do this before the annual, do they?
No. We said no way unless you want to pay for it. We're not going to do something like that.
Okay.
And they're going to actually request to do the presentation. Their people are going to come to and ask to be heard at the beginning of the meeting. You know, this is Kingston ownership. We're not owning this. We're agreeing that it's probably a good deal and yes, we will go into contract with them. But they need to present the why and the what. So, they're ready to do that.
Maureen, is the vote just going to be on the sale of the land or is it going to be the sale of the land and the funding for the new police station as well?
They're going to do it two ways. They've got, I believe that February 2nd is just about the land. And then I think they're going to come back at their regular town meeting because it's going to be in June, which is after Halifax and Plump did. And then they'll have an article about them getting the money to build it. I think they put up, I think the town meeting voted $30,000, $40,000 last year to do the survey for the whole thing. So, take notes coming.
What would happen if they pass the town meeting? The vote to...
They'll have the police station. If they agree to buy the land anyway, they may just keep trying year after year to, to get the money for it.
Susan?
Maureen, at what point will there be an engineered plan that we can actually look at, see where the buildings are and what the whole thing is about?
Yeah. That, that has been discussed. And the reason, we give them a little slack on it because it's going to cost a lot of money to go in there and do it. What we've agreed is once they hear from their town meeting, if it's a go-ahead, that they're going to start the process of plans and everything else. And the purchase and sales agreement also says that we have the right to refuse if we see the plans and say, guess what? That's not what we agree to.
So, you know, I'm, I'm focused a little bit. I have two questions. You're saying the school's retaining land. Is there enough land to build an administrative building or an alternative program to build?
Yeah. It's, that was one of the, you know, they, originally, they wanted the whole parcel and all the frontage and we would not agree with that. So, we kept enough frontage so we could almost put like a road, enough for a road, not just a driveway. And it's 15 acres that we're keeping.
Okay. You have a draw?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. They wanted the visibility. They, they wanted, they're getting over 200 feet of frontage because they want the visibility of the station being there.
And then just to follow up to Christine's question, if, is there any protection in the purchase and sale that if they don't get the money, the funding to build the building, they can't use that land for alternative use or just there is...
Yes. It can only be used that because we were concerned about that too. We don't want fields up there. We don't want anything else up there that's specific for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the school and the towns?
So, the second, I don't know.
You're not going to use that?
No.
So, it's basically a wait-and-see then for us, Maureen?
Yeah, it is. I just wanted to give you a heads up on it. The secretary at the administration building said she mailed the, did you get yours? Okay. She mailed the building envelope reports to you guys?
I just got it today. I think we have one copy for the three of us, which I have looked it over.
Okay. I have, I have a copy of each one here. One is for the middle school. This is the high school. One is for the middle school. As part of our capital planning last year, one of the first things we realized was that we needed to have, we needed to know what we needed for the buildings. So, we, we put aside money, I think it was about $20,000 to have this done. It's, it's quite a, quite a document to read for the both of them. The sad part is the pricing. Let me get to that page that I wrote on. Basically, they're talking about $300,000 per school per year in order to keep it up from where we, where we built them, from when we built them. We disagreed with some of the things on there because we believe that we can do them ourselves. We have, we have the ability to do many repairs ourselves. We have a wonderful crew that can do it. We have a CTE department, the carpentry, that are building some extra buildings for us on the property now. So, we haven't, again, we just got this, I think, January, at the January meeting, we just received it. So, we haven't really looked at it and discussed it as a committee yet. But I wanted to let you know that it was out there.
Do you personally approve this?
We're not...
Accept it officially?
We're not really even at that point. We asked, we asked for a building envelope plan which goes from the whole thing, anything you could possibly think of, so that we would know as we do our capital plan every year, things that we better be looking out for. And our, our building person is Director of Building Services. I mean, he's fabulous with this stuff. You know, he looked at that and he says, well, I already know about this. I already know about this.
Who is the director?
Brian Aguirre.
Brian?
Brian Aguirre.
Well, this is perfect because it's actually needed for the town's capital improvement plan. So, I am so glad that the timing is perfect.
He did a great job on it. They did a great job.
Okay. So, we would be safe to use these projects and the estimates that they have provided in the capital improvement plan?
We think some of the estimates are very high, but if you look at the way they broke it down at the top, they're, they're including things that are not necessary. You know, the transportation insurance, we already have a lot of that stuff in place. So, although they're saying that to give us, to scare us to death, we're hoping that it would never be that hard.
And does this include IT needs as well?
No.
Okay. So, this is just the building.
Only the physical property.
Is it possible to get something similar for IT?
We're actually working on the updated technology plan now and we're working on our capital plan that we've put into place. But we've sort of just got started on that a little bit. So, we're obviously working on it, but at this time.
All right. Well, who's the IT director?
Steve Pellow. P-E-L-L-O-W-E.
All right. Maureen, he may know Ballpark.
Yeah, we have an old one. We have one from last year, but it's almost, we need to update it every year. We were able to get some grant funding for some switch that they needed. And, you know, it's like $50,000 if he was able to get a grant for it. So, so it's fortunate that even though we're listening, these things need to be done. If we can get the money from somewhere else, that's what...
That's even better. Yeah. Okay. Is it possible to get electronic copies of these for our consultants?
I don't know. I, I imagine that they will be seen electronically, but I will, I will do that and have it sent to everybody.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you, Maureen.
Yeah.
Susan?
Yeah.
In regard to the capital, this is exterior building only.
Right.
Doesn't include interior.
This is just...
Just the exterior.
Exterior.
Yeah.
God. Who do we talk to to get the interior?
Uh, you know, we're, we keep it pretty, we take good care of it. Let's put it that way. The toilets are flushed and the lights are working. Nobody's falling on the floor. No tiles are lifting, so we're hanging on there. And then the last thing, and I mentioned it to you, not in this last email, but a while ago, that Silver Lake has re brought, has brought back from a situation eight years ago, the sleep study, we call it. And it has to do with the start times for the adolescents from 7th through 12th grade. Many of the towns around here have already done it. It looks like we're probably going to be there. I don't know if it will be next year or the year after, but we will be doing it. I brought you some information on that, too, to take a look at. It's been on TV lately, and we've got a group that's getting ready to meet the PTOs and do posters and things like that. What it entails is starting the high schools a little bit later. In other words, they start now at seven, we're trying to get it up to like quarter of eight, something like that. And it'd be about a twenty-minute difference to the elementary school. It has a lot to do with blessing.
So it will still be junior high, high, high school get picked up first, and then the elementary. So the elementary are not going to go before the junior high and high school?
Yeah, that was the problem last time, if you remember. We mixed that idea completely.
Okay, gotcha. So we would push back everybody's school day?
Exactly. Between twenty and forty minutes, is really.
Okay.
And any additional expense?
No, the only concern we had was the, was that the bus route was going to be a problem. And we met with the bus company last, at our last meeting, and went over everything with her, and she was wonderful. And she said, unless I have to add a bus, which you don't, just shift in a little bit of time, there should be, there would be no difference. We'd still be able to keep our late buses, you know, we'd still have the timing on it. A lot of the routes change every year. I mean, if we have a child that's on Cedar Street, you know, one year, but we don't have them the next year, it's how far they have to go to do this one set of buses for each town, so. So we're working on it, just what guys know.
And you expect this to happen within the next two years?
I do.
And I'm sure there'll be plenty of opportunity for public extension.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have their own Facebook site, and there's been some good discussion back and forth. And, you know, I will tell you that eight years ago, I was on the committee for this, and Ellen Steinbrenner, I don't know if you remember her, was the leader. She, I said, she was the pioneer. It didn't pass because no one had ever heard of it. And I'm like, what are you nuts? You know, get your kid out of bed, you know, what's the matter with you? I worked on it, you know, whatever. And the science behind it now was shocking to me. I completely changed my thought process on it, and I can see the American Pediatrics Association has signed on to it, all couple of different things. And like you said, Duxbury's done it, Sharon has done it, down the Cape, Nossett with Keith Gully's the principal there, superintendent there. So it's a thing of the future, for sure.
So you've got Arlington, Duxbury, you know, also the complete statewide process, you know, Sharon.
Okay, I'm done.
All right. The upcoming budget process, did you want to talk about that, or was that...
We just started it. We just got our preliminary budget last school committee meeting, which I believe was in the 14th.
So you were there, right?
Yes, I was. Yeah. And we have a new superintendent, so she's really got a different handle on the whole thing, which is great, because she sort of is going line by line, explaining the whole process, because we have new members as well. So we only just received it. It's not a wish list, because we were told that we've got to level service everybody. The biggest problems that we see so far is that the, all the insurances went up twelve percent. And I don't know if you remember, the last couple of years, they didn't go up at all. In hindsight, we probably should have tried to put a little bit away, knowing that now we're going to get hit with it. Unfortunately, the biggest item is, of course, the services personnel. And between contracts that have been signed, I believe the teaching line has gone up about six hundred thousand dollars.
What's that percentage? Do you know?
I don't. Do you have it? So, I thought it was six thirty-five or something. But again, it's preliminary. The only way that could get cut is if we cut people. And that's, you know, that's where it's coming from. It's, we've tried to do everything. We're using more of the services of our aides, so that it frees up the teachers. A lot of those are paid by grants. But the grants require, if a teacher is in that slot, that we have to contribute part of the money to the retirement. So if we use our aides for the different things that they're allowed to do, we save that little piece of it.
And capital spending?
We have discussed it, but we don't have a hot copy of the plan. We know that a couple of things are not an emergency, but we don't think we can get through much longer. One of them is the phone system, that we've talked about for a number of years. And when the phones go out, you know, parents can't get in touch with anybody, whatever, for whatever reason. It always seems to happen like just before vacation, or, you know, I always say, you guys just shut off the phone, basically, that's, you know, what I do. But, and that's about ninety thousand dollars. They've worked with two or three different companies to get pricing, going back and forth. It'll be the whole system in contact with the elementary schools. So, you know, they can have that part of it with the technical person.
Can I just ask, did someone from Silver Lake ever actually make contact with the phone room? I don't believe so. As of Tuesday, I don't know.
With what?
We reached out to the superintendent to have the business manager, the IT manager, and I think that was it. We didn't ask for Peter Veneto, who we know, I think we're going to ask for his input as well, to meet with our reps from the Collins Group, who are putting together our capital improvement plan. And they didn't, Dale never heard back, and they didn't show.
Okay, could I ask, when you do that, that you copy myself and Jason on it?
Absolutely.
Because I actually just saw this letter tonight, and I got it from the box. I don't get up here to get the mail, so I requested that people email things to me. It's a lot easier, because I don't have any meetings here. But is the deadline, is there a deadline on this?
We're trying to get this information as quickly as possible, and it's, I know for the school, it will be a daunting task. There is a lot of good information that you've given us on the envelope, but they're going to need IT information and information on the interior as well to help us put this plan together.
Okay. I will get this to Joy tomorrow and make sure that Christine and she work on it.
I'll have Monica email you the documents that we're requesting they submit, so that it's pretty self-explanatory, and that's got everything. Okay.
We're really good at filling out forms.
Excellent.
FinCom, anything you want to add, ask, say?
Did you get the email from the fire chief about the pump up, the issues with the truck?
You know, that is in our correspondence. I'm not sure all of us have seen it. You've got the same email.
Yes, I was just wondering if you would be following up with him, and that money that he's looking for, it sounds like you might have most of it in his budget, but does that mean next year, he's going to be willing to do the things he didn't do? He just, it is not enough information there.
Agreed. And have you had a chance to look at this, have you?
I did look at it, yeah.
So, in brief, there was an equipment failure on one of the fire trucks to repair it, and it's going to be about fifteen thousand dollars.
Between five and fifteen.
There's only twelve thousand dollars in the budget for that. And so we received this today, or looked at it today, and I'm not sure of the next step, whether we should be doing something next, whether FinCom should be doing something next.
Is he just looking for the money now, to fix the truck now?
I think, I mean, I think it's, it sounds like he's trying to have it fixed, and he's got money in his budget, but not necessarily enough, and that's problematic. You can't agree to do work to deliver money.
Absolutely.
But also, you know, is he looking, is he going to look for a reserve fund transfer then? Is he going to look to move some maintenance, these planned issues, next year? I think we have to understand so that we know, and again, if he has twelve thousand dollars left in that budget line, and he has fifty thousand dollars to repair, he can't, you know, then we all have to put our heads together. So I think somebody needs to get more information from him. He won't also have an email. I mean, I can, and disaster's involved.
I'm glad to talk to him and maybe get you in the loop. You guys meet next, two weeks from now?
Correct.
And at minimum, I think probably needs to come in and see you all in a couple of weeks. I'm glad to chat with him and see if he has a plan, and maybe we can...
I have a question, you need to fix the truck, this is just a thousand, ten...
Okay.
Maybe if you remember, the big spread between five and fifteen.
It is a big spread.
Anything else, FinCom? Okay, thanks. Maureen, we thank you for coming in. FinCom, I know you're meeting. Do you have a camera over there?
Yes.
Good. So we're actually not used to some, or something to say?
Well, I was going to suggest to do the appointments for the Community Compact, so that maybe you can be sworn in tonight before you take off. It's the committee, the Community Compact Committee? It's the same people as the DOR. Yes, it's the same people, Susan, and you and me, and John, and Deb. So we just need to be sworn in for that. So why don't we make the motion, we can sign these, and then hand them their paperwork so they can get sworn in?
You have it?
I do. Okay. Well, I'll give a quick report, because, all right, the town applied for a grant from the Department of Revenue, and it was for developing financial management policies, do a five-year financial forecast, and a capital improvement plan. This is what we've been talking about tonight. The grant is forty-five thousand dollars, and we are being assisted by a group from the Collins Center, who were very impressive. We had a kickoff meeting with them on Tuesday. Just about every board in town met with them. They're all working on the documentation to submit a capital improvement plan, so that they can help us to put one through, for the whole town, so that we can start to plan to address these needs that we have, long-term needs. So having said that, I will make a motion that we appoint John Trainor to the Community Compact Committee until dissolved, Susan Ossoff to the Community Compact Committee until dissolved, Deborah Anderson to the Community Compact Committee until dissolved, and Christine Joy to the Community Compact Council until dissolved.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Just a little bit. This sort of puts your other committee on hold. These people aren't doing double duty.
That's correct.
It's this reading or the other one, it's not...
It's, what we had done was, the town had a report done by, was it the Department of Revenue that did the report for us? To come up with areas of need for the town. And these same people have been working on the DOR report. We're also the DOR Advisory Committee. And being that there was overlap in the duties, the DOR Committee said we needed a capital improvement plan. They said we needed to have financial policies. So we just thought it made sense to have us serve on both committees, so that they would be just, you know, the same people continuing the process. And while we're working on the Community Compact, the DOR is on hold, so that it's not confusing for people. So what we're doing right now is just working with the Collins Center to help us address these areas that we've gotten the grant monies for.
All right, so we have a motion, and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll sign those, and you can get the sign.
And then, Mark, you need to sign this contract with the, this is with the Commonwealth of Mass for the grant money. And we'd already voted this.
Sure.
So this is just a formality for you to sign. You can sign that at any time.
For those of you that are unfamiliar with this, this is forty-five thousand dollars of free consultation. Christine is really impetuous to this, and it's a huge amount of wonderful information and guidance that we're going to get, particularly in the capital planning of the five years. Great thing for the town. Okay. So normally, this room's pretty empty around this time of night, and we know that many of you here for the seven o'clock subject, but we have some more business to do, and so we'll go on with the business until then. So, DOR report, public safety, anything else on goals and priorities? Did you want to look down your checklist, or are you comfortable with that for tonight?
Most of the items that were left were Dale's. He's working on doing a fixed cost spreadsheet for us, so that he's still working on. And we're working on getting job descriptions for all town employees, and separating out ones that have a contract with the job description included. So we're still working on those things. Collins already reported on public safety building committee, Community Compact. We met on Tuesday for the kickoff, and it was a really good meeting. I wish I could have stayed for more of it, but I had to go to my paying job. And I just feel like we're going to get some good guidance from this group. I don't know how you felt about it. You had a chance to meet with them, and...
Yes, I think that we'll get some good guidance.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful.
And was John here? Did John, did you want to say anything, John?
About?
About when we had the kickoff meeting with the Community Compact, or the Collins Group? What did you think?
I was very impressed with the caliber of the people that came down. These are people who've had multiple decades of experience in municipal government. I think what we'll come out with, that will give us a good roadmap, sort of how the town should evolve its financial policies for the future. We'll have to see what we can do.
Very good.
Okay. All right. I guess we are up to correspondence.
All right.
We have a couple of additions. Please go ahead.
Okay. All right, so we've got a memo from Chief Borsari. It says, "Good day, the fire chief is informing the Board of Selectmen," this is what we just talked about with the Finance Committee. "In the Finance Committee, that while operating at a working structure fire at thirty-one Winnetuckset Road, our Engine One experienced a catastrophic pump failure. At this moment, it is out of service. Engine One is a nineteen ninety-six Freightliner pumper. For twenty years, there is no documentation of any certified pump tests ever being performed. In addition, I spoke with former Chief Walker, who stated that he has never done any pump repairs on that truck. I have been in, been on the department for nineteen years and can attest that no repairs have been done, done to the pump. At this time, the foam generator does not induct foam into the water stream. At least four gate valves are in need of replacement. Mechanically, the vehicle is safe and reliable, with no choice other than to repair the main fire pump. I have contacted a firm to make the repairs. Our Engine Two is the main attack engine to any fire. Engine One brings men and equipment to supplement the operation. In addition, such as was the case at the Winnetuckset Fire, it relay pumps water to Engine Two. Plimpton relies heavily on Engine Two to protect the property of our residents and business owners in town. I have been given some cost estimates somewhat between, somewhere between five and fifteen thousand dollars, depending on the extent of the damage to the truck. As of now, my equipment line has the twelve thousand dollars appropriated still in place. The pump manufacturer, Hale Industries, no longer supports repairs to this model fire pump. We are attempting to get the parts needed from other sources. It appears at this time that I will be successful in acquiring the replacement parts needed to get this truck back in service. I will worry about fixing the other problems discussed in FY seventeen. I would be happy to sit down with you folks anytime to answer any further questions." And he'll update us on the situation as it evolves. So you're going to reach out to him, Deb?
We'll reach out to him, and try to coordinate with FinCom, and better understand where this money's going to come from.
Okay.
Okay? I have one for that.
All right.
More there?
More federal stormwater mandates are coming. Seems like it would be more appropriate for Jim. So why don't we put that in Jim's box? All right, from the Plimpton Highway Department, dated January twelfth, regarding snow and ice FY two thousand sixteen, please be advised that the snow and ice budget for FY sixteen has been expended. I am requesting that an emergency be declared so that the Highway Department may continue service. Jim O'Keefe. All right, so we need to vote this as a snow emergency. All right, I'll make a motion that we declare a snow emergency. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. All right.
I have a question about snow removal. It was my understanding that we don't actually have an employee to shovel out the police department, or the library, or... I spoke with somebody in the townhouse today who came over and did it, not knowing if he was going to get paid for it or not. And I thought this had come up last year.
I think the normal maintenance fellow's away. I don't know if that's the issue.
Okay, I don't know either, so I just...
I don't know either. I thought that Daryl may have...
So he's away, and that's why somebody else sent him.
I will be glad to see what I can figure out.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's just that he's away, and maybe we don't have a replacement.
Well, we'll have to get a backup.
The areas you were concerned about or had heard about were the library, the police station?
Yeah, yes. I know the library was an issue last year. It was the police station this year, I think.
And this building?
This building wasn't mentioned.
Okay.
But I, yeah, I don't know.
I'll see what I can do.
Okay. All right, from Xfinity, looks like they've changed their address. Everybody's going to get this on your bill. "We are writing to provide you with an updated address information relative to the notices section of your current cable television license." Actually, no, this would just apply to us then. "Please be advised that all notices to be served upon the licensee Comcast should be sent by certified mail, posted prepaid, or by overnight delivery to the following address." They've, looks like they're in Wilmington now, so we'll just have to note that. All right. Also from Xfinity, this is municipal emergency reporting procedure. "In an effort to better assist our municipal customers, we are writing once again to provide you with the emergency reporting procedures for certain outside plant and service problems. In the event that any municipal building experiences problems with downed cable drops, signal transport issues with INET or video return lines, public education and government access channels, or to have our technical or construction staff on site during an emergency, please follow the detailed steps below." So it just gives us what we're supposed to do in the event that we have issues in town buildings. All right, you still have a little bit of time. Okay, let's do these in order.
I got a couple of them, so.
Okay. We didn't talk about this one already? We did this one.
Yeah, that was.
Okay, did you have something? This was the January 15th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. So did you have something new you wanted to add? Because we already talked about?
Well, this is, I think, the dog issue has shown up both at this board and the Halifax Board for a dog on, who lives in Plimpton but is a, has been a potential problem to a neighboring Halifax person. We're having a dog hearing next Monday night at, I think, 7:00 PM. The Halifax Animal Control Officer will be here, the Plimpton Animal Control Officer. We've invited the immediate parties, the complainant and the owners of the dog.
What about the, we ordered the dog restrained, and I think the order is up today. What's going to happen with that?
I spoke with him, and he extended that out.
Okay. Okay, so the dog will be restrained until the hearing?
That is a good understanding.
Okay. All right. So then, Friday, January 22nd, Plimpton Wants Pot Input. Plimpton Selectmen Seek Opinions on Marijuana Grow Operation, which I'm sure why a lot of you are here, so we thank you for coming. Let's see, what else? Looks like the Board of Health talked Smoking, Dumping, and Helping. And I think, is that it for Plimpton? Is that it for Plimpton? Was there anything else in here? Do you remember? Oh, Nice Triad is a hit with seniors. Nice article in here and some very nice pictures. And I think that that is, that is it. All right.
All right, so a couple other things in correspondence. Many of you have probably received an email or heard about the Open Space Survey. That can, the Open Space Committee is in the process of revising the open space plan, which they're required to do every few years. And they are doing a townwide survey, collecting information regarding open space and recreation over the next five years. There are hard copy surveys available in this building, the library, I think at the Village Cafe as well. It also can be done online. It takes about five minutes. Would be really wonderful for as many people as possible to give their opinion, because much of the open space plan over the next five years is based on the information of the survey. So aside from getting the hard copy, it can be done electronically through Survey Monkey, If anyone needs that, they can let me know, and I'll be glad to get that to them. Since we have a couple more minutes, we might as well just do the dates to remember, and then I think we will have covered pretty much all of our business. The minutes, I think we're going to have to wait until next week, because we just got those, and I haven't had a chance to take a look.
Oh, I haven't had a chance to see those.
So we'll do that next week. So, dates to remember, Selectmen's meetings in the month of February, the first, the eighth, the 22nd, and the 29th will be off for President's Day, hopefully. We do have the dog complaint next week. I talked about the survey. I spoke to the Veterans Agent, Roxanne, who was wondering about moving ahead with some kind of Veterans Memorial. She's going to come in on February 8th and talk with us. She and I had a brief discussion about the possibility of the memorial. Certainly, two big issues, someone to champion and do the work on it. The other issue is the funding, and what I discussed with her is the possibility of a CPC project, a funded project to renovate the gazebo that's desperately needed, and potentially combining that with a memorial. She'll be in on the 8th. We can talk about that. I think that's feasible and doable. I think the Community Preservation Committee would be excited about such a project. Really, it's going to be a matter of someone that's willing to champion, form a committee up that could do most of it, and we'll discuss that more on the 8th.
Does this have anything to do with the proposed corner of Main Street Memorial?
Yeah, I think it was tied into that, and really, the question is, you know, the function of the funding. The likelihood of the town having discretionary money, as much as it's a great project, I think is, isn't very likely. So the possibility of combining it with CPC seemed like a way to get it funded. I mean, the other possibility is private funding or grant funding. And again, what it would take is someone that's interested in it and wanted to do the groundwork to get it done. Well worth doing.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great project.
So having mentioned that, maybe if anyone's interested in that, the 8th would be a great time to come on in.
And Roxanne did seem to think that there would be funding available to help pay for a Veterans Memorial, and this is something that we had, we've talked about on several occasions, and we're hoping that some veterans come forward to help us out with this, to, you know, work towards getting a memorial that we'd like to put on the town green. There was talk about putting it in other locations, but we felt the town green was the most appropriate for veterans of all. You can't hear me, Cam? For veterans that had served in all the branches and all the wars. So that's what our plan is.
All right. Any other dates to remember? Any other Selectmen issues? So?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
I did want to apologize. Last week's public safety building meeting was not taped because there was some, there was a conflict with the taper. He got his times mixed up. Hopefully, we won't make that mistake again. But there is a meeting this week at 6:00 on Wednesday.
So at 7:00? And the agenda item now is the proposed Marijuana Grow Facility, and particularly seeking public input on that. So just a little bit of background quickly. A Plimpton citizen, Jeff Randall, approached the Board of Selectmen a few weeks ago with a proposed project, a Marijuana Grow Facility. He met with us, the Board of Selectmen, and let us know that to do such a thing, he would need either Board of Selectmen approval or at least a nonapproval from the Board to move ahead. He gave us a presentation about what the project was all about. I think the Selectmen felt there was enough here that it should be pursued, and we were well aware that this might be somewhat controversial, and we're very interested in seeking as much public input as possible, and hence, here we are. So the purpose of this meeting tonight is really to get as much citizen input as we can. By way of quick review, it's our understanding that this project would offer us the opportunity for potentially $40,000 or $50,000 in increased tax revenue and revenue from the production of the crop, and we heard that as one of the main benefits. Over the last few weeks, the Selectmen have certainly heard several concerns along the way. These include how the project would affect the butters, the abutters, concern about pollution, noise pollution, odors, herbicide or fertilizer, concern about land values, concern about proximity to the school, the mixed messages to the schoolchildren, the reputation of the town, and the concern about potentially theft or other kinds of crimes, concern about where a dispensary would be, and concern about increased work for the police. So that's only to list those things, to say that we have heard all those things along the way. So as I said, the goal tonight is to explore all of this further. We're very interested in hearing input, both people for and against this project. The way we'll do this is we'll have Jeff speak first briefly to give a quick overview of the project, and then we'll go ahead and hear from citizens, both those for and against. So a few ground rules. People can certainly speak for or against the project when we get to that part of thing, either in the form of simply their statement or content or comment. Certainly welcome to ask questions of Jeff or each other. We would ask that any questions come through the chair, and we would ask also that people, as best they can, be concise, so all those that want to be heard can be heard. We are aware that harshness and loudness are not necessarily the most convincing way to make an argument. It has been the desire and attempt of this board over the last couple of years to introduce as much civility into town government as possible, and we hope that that can continue tonight. And I think, lastly, in terms of ground rules, we hope, we know that people are coming with some pretty strong opinions, both for and against, but I think the Selectmen are absolutely willing to listen open-mindedly and open-heartedly, and we hope that everyone, even with their strong opinions, can also listen closely to the arguments that come forth. So I think those are the ground rules. Any additional comments from the Selectmen before we begin?
Can I just recommend that we use Robert's Rules of Order and that we go with opposing views, so that, you know, people that want to speak for and then people that speak against, and so that we go back and forth? And then, when, you know, one side is exhausted, then anybody else that wants to speak can certainly have an opportunity to speak. I would ask that people raise their hand to be recognized by the chair, and we've got a microphone here so that people are able to speak. I would ask that, please don't interrupt other people when they have the floor, and that state your name and your address. And then, everyone would have an opportunity to speak once, and then after everyone who would like to speak has an opportunity, then we can look at people having a second chance to speak, so that everybody has an opportunity to speak on this matter. But when do we get to, where do you have us in there? Because I've got questions for Jeff.
Already?
Yeah, well, yeah, I had more time to review the proposal.
So I think the way I'd probably like to do it, Jeff speak first, audience speak along the way, then some questions for us.
Perfect.
I think we'll play that one a little by ear. Just a reminder that no individual is permitted to disrupt the meeting of a public body, and at the request of the Chair, all members of the public could be required to be silent. Hopefully, we'll never get to that point, but just a reminder on that. So again, important to use the mic, your name and address before you speak. And with that, any other comments?
No.
So I would like to just take another moment for just a moment of silence for all of us to just gather our thoughts and make a commitment to listen, a commitment to civility, and a commitment to basing any decisions we make on facts. So just a moment of silence. So again, thanks, everyone, for being here. And just a reminder, it is not necessarily the intent of this committee to make, or this board, to make a decision tonight. That's not impossible, but I don't think that's, if anyone's expecting that, that won't necessarily happen tonight. So first of all, Jeff Randall, if he'd like to give a quick overview with?
Hi, guys. How's it going today? I'm not a public speaker, and this is not my forte, but we're proposing a Marijuana Grow Facility for the marijuana industry, and it is a grow facility only. There's no dispensary involved, and this would take place on my family farm, and it's a form of agriculture that, you know, we're looking forward to being able to utilize to keep our farm in, you know, in good standing and allow a future. I have brought a friend of mine, who's an advisor for us in the industry, Chris, and he can pretty much answer all your questions. It's based on, you know, any of the legal implications, security, all the regulations that are in place with the state, and basically what this is all about. I appreciate everybody showing up, and I hope I can answer to all your questions adequately and to your satisfaction. Thank you very much.
All right, so I think maybe the way to do this is go with questions first before comments. So questions for Jeff. Sir?
Hi, I'm Bruce Stennis Street here in Plimpton. Jeff, just out of curiosity, when I was online earlier today, I had found a listing of the growth, Marijuana Grow Facilities that are very local, Franklin and a few of the other places that are just local. And I was under the impression that the amount of material that's being grown in these facilities is more than adequate for the dispensaries that we now have in place. Why have you basically decided to start another grow facility so close to these, number one? And why did you decide to have a grow facility in the town?
The grow facility in the town, the grow, I'm sorry. The grow facility in the town is because the industry is nowhere near going to be supplied to the amount of patients that are, that have rights to this medication. And I know that that's a little bit of a misnomer, but I'd like Chris speak on behalf of that aspect of the supply and demand issue.
The basic answer to that is the Commonwealth requires that dispensaries should be called vertically integrated, meaning that they have to produce essentially everything that they sell out of their retail stores. So the existing cultivation centers that you mentioned are serving, are tied to and serving a specific dispensary, generally in a different town. So that would be the case here as well. This cultivation facility would serve only one dispensary. They're not allowed to wholesale amongst one another. So the facility in Franklin, for example, can't sell to anybody other than the dispensary they're attached, they happen to be attached to one in Northampton, but they can only provide medicine to the Northampton facility. There's no resale. It's all one company. They simply move it from the cultivation to the dispensary.
I don't think I need a microphone. Maureen Doyle, Ring Road. Jeff, I have a copy of your application of intent, which basically says it's a request for a certificate of registration to operate a registered marijuana dispensary, which you signed on September 27th of 2015. And it also says that there's a person by the name of Trevor Pratt, Pratt, who has $400,000 in a savings account to help subsidize this. four hundred thousand dollars in a savings account to help subsidize this. It also says that once you get this license, you then do have a right to open a dispensary. You actually have a right to open three different types of facilities. So I was just curious what this actually meant.
Chris can explain it, but basically, a grow facility, what they allow you to do is do a remote grow facility, and the dispensaries are located in towns that were in negotiations with that are interested in having a dispensary in their town.
So if that is your four hundred thousand dollars, though, it says that means you're going to go for the other two sites, because if you're only going to go for one site, you would have to have five hundred thousand dollars of cash available.
I'm going to look.
Yeah, so, that's right. So the, when the application was put in, it was put in with the possibility of opening, possibility of opening three retail facilities. None of those would be in Plimpton. In fact, in order to do that, you would need to get a letter of support or non-opposition from the board for each of the license classes for cultivation, processing, and dispensing. There's no request for a license, for a letter for dispensing. As Jeff mentioned, the company is in talks with a number of towns to see where they could locate a retail facility, but that would not be here. There's no request before the board for a letter of approval for retail.
But if he gets his license, he would have the authority to do that.
To open a dispensary, not here. Unless he, unless he got approval from the, from the, a letter of support from the board to open a retail facility specifically, he would not have the ability to open in town.
But it's a possibility.
Yes.
To open a dispensary in town?
Yeah.
Yeah. If they got approval from the board.
No, no, that's not...
But there's no...
If you look at the paperwork, when we submit...
We have it right here.
Okay, when we submit the form, it checks off the grow cultivation facility is what they're voting on. And if you look at the letter that we submitted to the town as a letter for them to vote, it expressly states that it's for a cultivation facility only. And if to open up a dispensary, you have to go to that town and the selectmen have to approve.
So it's possible.
I also have a thing that says guidance for municipalities regarding the use of medical marijuana. And it defines a registered medical dispensary as having the opportunity to have a retail facility as well as cultivation and processing operations. So once you get the license, you could do it.
No.
No, you have to apply, you have to apply with, when you, when you submit the siting profile, which is the third phase of the application, you have to include in that the location where you plan to dispense, cultivate, and process. And you have to have a letter of support or non-opposition from the town as part of that one application. So you couldn't submit and get approved for cultivation, and then later come back and say, well, now we want to put a dispensary in Plimpton. That would all have to be in the exact same application. So it's not, it's not possible to do this.
You know, when this was presented in the newspaper, I mean, we've literally only had two weeks to kind of understand the process of this. And it's literally overwhelming when you start to read the information online. I mean, the issues with not only pesticides, but rodents, rats, that it says you have to have not only the growth facility, you need a storage shed to put all the product that would be damaged, that has to be destroyed.
That all happens within the building itself.
Well, it says in the guidelines through the Department of Public Health that it has to be a separate, separate storage facility.
It's in the same building. It has to be within the same building.
Yeah.
You know, and in terms of the safety concerns, I'm sure you're going to have the building secured if, in fact, it goes through. I'm not concerned at all about the safety of your pot and the crop. What I'm concerned about is the neighborhood. Because I think what would happen is, if I was a criminal, I wouldn't try to get into a locked facility. I would go to your house and put a gun to your head and threaten you and your family and ask you to let me into the facility to get the pot. I just, in all the years I've lived in Plimpton, which is approaching thirty, I never, never thought I would be sitting in a meeting trying to defend why we shouldn't have a pot farm in the town. And if you, there's what, twenty-five hundred houses in this town, I would guess, residences? Fifty thousand dollars means we'd all get twenty bucks taken off of our tax bill.
If we can, let's, let's stay in the form of questions for the moment. We will get to a place for comments along the way, but other questions for Jeff, sir?
My name is Dan Doyle. I live with Maureen, my wife, at eighty-eight Ring Road. Jeff, I got to tell you, I personally resent the January fourth article where you misrepresented the abutters' opinion, where you said that you had talked to a number of abutters who enthusiastically supported the project. I called all my neighbors. There's only one person I know of that you called. And I got to tell you, I personally resent you misrepresenting my feeling about it. And I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that you misrepresented the chief of police opinion on it as well. Because in that article, you had said that you had had several conversations with him that sort of implied that he was for it. I have the newspaper. He wrote a half-page, a half-ed piece saying that he was against it.
So you have two questions. One is you're, you're asking me whether I went to several of my butters.
Do you want me to ask the questions, or do you want to...
Do you want me to respond to the questions?
Yeah, my question is, why would you misrepresent the abutters' opinion, and why would you misrepresent the chief of police opinion?
Okay, two things. One is, the facts that you're talking about are actually incorrect. I did go to several of my butters. You know, you have to realize that as my name...
Can I ask you who they were?
Could I, can I, would you let me finish? I, you know, for me to go into your house and knock at your door with my proposal, there were only certain people that I felt comfortable, that I knew well enough, so that I felt comfortable knocking at their door. Because if you were opposed to it, I'm at your house, and I don't want to...
I mean, you could call first.
Sure, yeah, and I, and I realize that, but this is really the appropriate forum for our discussion. For me to kind of pin you at your house and tell you what I'm doing, I really felt that that wasn't an appropriate thing for me to do. So the worst of it...
You don't think it was, I'm just trying to have a conversation.
Yeah, sure.
You don't think it was appropriate to call on a butter and say, I'm thinking about a pot farm?
I, I did talk to several of butters, but I didn't want to pin people in their house.
I don't know who they could be, other than one person I know. Because I asked them.
It isn't, you know, I could tell you that I went to several of them, and I did talk to them, and their reaction was positive. I'm not going to name those people, because I don't think that's appropriate, but that, that absolutely happened. And I'm sorry that you feel it was a mischaracterization of, you know, I didn't say...
How could I feel, I'm one of the abutters. How could I feel different?
I didn't, I didn't say that I went to everybody. I, I went to several of the abutters and spoke with them, and the people that I did were enthusiastic about it. And I didn't, I didn't go to every house. There's like thirty houses, and I didn't want to interrupt everybody. And this is where it should happen. And I'm, I apologize if you take that as a personal front. It didn't mean to. I mean, there were people here who are abutters that I talked to who said that you didn't.
Oh, that's probably true, sure.
Yeah, and as far as the chief is, the chief I met with, the article actually said that I had met with the chief and had a productive meeting. And chief, do you think that we had a productive meeting?
I could, that's, first of all, I'd say Jeff's a nice guy. Productive, I don't know. We had, we had a nice conversation, but I made it clear before you left that I wasn't opposed to this idea.
Yeah, sure, and I understand that as a law enforcement, as a face of law enforcement for Plimpton, I understood that. And I thought that we had a productive conversation, and I don't think I mischaracterized that. And I hope that I didn't, because I, that's how I felt about it. I didn't say you were for it or against it. I just said that we had a productive conversation. So I...
You know, I, I think...
We'll give you another chance, but other, other questions?
You have a question? Hi, well, there's another question.
Oh, there we go, please.
Sharon Houseley, I too live on Ring Road. First of all, I'd like to say I don't think the location of this is the issue. If we can do this, abutting the elementary school, it can go anywhere in Plimpton. My question is, I've lived in Plimpton for over twenty years. I've raised both my boys there, and never once have I felt unsafe. And I can tell you, if you put this grow facility in, there's a path that connects the bogs to your house, and I'm not going to feel safe. What is going to be done? Not for the grow facility, sure, you'll have razor wire, you might have security guards, you'll have cameras. I've looked online. The security issues are real. What are you going to do about the security of the neighborhood, about the people, the residences, the school? How are you going to address that?
Well, first of all, the building itself is a very secure building. Our...
I'm not talking about the building. I could care less about your pot. I care about my backyard, my kids, my house, and my property value.
Okay, and I understand that. This is an agricultural endeavor. We're allowed in the Massachusetts general law to...
In a residential neighborhood, abutting the school?
This is agriculture. There is a limit to the distance from our building to the structures on a school, and as far as I understand it, we're about a quarter of a mile from that. And that quarter of a mile is wetlands, a river, and extensive area that is almost impenetrable. Now, I know the distance is only five hundred feet. You know, it's, it's a tough place, so, but go ahead.
You still haven't addressed the security in my backyard, my house, my property value. I mean, there's, if your facility is secure, it does nothing for my yard that people are going to be cutting through, the gangs, the criminals, to get to your land.
This whole process is about eliminating that aspect of it, because it's...
How?
How?
It, for, for people that, you know, this, for people that need this medication, that we're going to be growing this for, that isn't part of, you know, this process.
That's, that's not the question. It doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood.
It's agriculture. And you have to realize...
And by the way, I'm with the Doyles. Thanks for the call. How long have I known you? Thanks for letting me know. You know, one of the things that bothers me the most is that you tried to slide this in under the radar using agricultural venture and making, implying that all of your neighbors supported it without talking to them.
I don't think that's what I said at all.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to the comment part. We're going to stay on the question part for the moment.
Elizabeth to Ring Road, oh, everybody can hear me. Thank you. To Ring Road, I guess my question is, was this, was there this much objection to the liquor store opening on the green? Maybe Christine could speak to that, because you were probably here then.
I was here then. No.
No, okay. And is this breaking law?
Well, the liquor store was in a business zone district, and it was a business, so we're kind of apples and oranges. But there wasn't the level of opposition, but the liquor is legal for people that are twenty-one years and older, and medical marijuana is decriminalized, but marijuana itself is still illegal.
Legal, however, in the state for, for medical reasons.
Right, it's decriminalized for, for medical purposes.
And did you have this much controversy over the gun store in town?
No, I wasn't here.
Just my question and my comment.
Mr. Henry?
Try not to yell, but hopefully everybody can hear it. I think, I'm quite familiar with the agricultural laws, and I'm sure that this would be allowed. It is a right to farm community, and this is a farm product. Do you think that under chapter forty A of the Mass General Law, that a dispensary would be automatically allowed as an accessory use, like has happened here with restaurants? And I see you shaking your head, and I think you're wrong. I actually have a legal opinion. It says that is the case.
Okay, I can help you, I mean, I can answer that. I would sign whatever was required in an agreement with the town, that I would never open up a dispensary on my family farm. You know, this is, this is where I live. I've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort working on my place, and it's where I, it's where my family is, it's where I live. And I think that it's a decent fit for me to, you know, provide this agricultural product, but in no way, shape, or form am I ever interested, or would I ever be interested, in this being a dispensary at my residence. You know, I, I live there, I feel...
The only point I try to make is that legally, and the town couldn't do anything about it, you would be allowed a dispensary as an accessory use.
I mean, if I could speak to that, whether that's true or not, you couldn't just do it because it's an accessory use, you still would need to apply to the Department of Public Health to put a dispensary there. You would need to have a letter of support or non-opposition from the board in order to put the dispensary there. So even if you got approval for a cultivation facility as a use by right in an agricultural zone, you still would need to go through all the other layers of approval in order to put a dispensary there. You couldn't just, it is not opening a restaurant. The, the amount of approvals that you have to go through to open the dispensary are extremely robust and require a high degree of town approval.
I'm very familiar with that, but review chapter forty-eight.
Yeah, and I would be, I would go to any length to make sure the town was protected.
I mean, you can make the letter conditional on never opening a dispensary. It just doesn't make sense as a retail property.
Shelley?
I guess, actually, it's along the same line as what Mr. Henry's speaking about, because chapter forty, the exemptions are huge for agriculture, which is why we have a water dispensary in town that's deemed agriculture, and they can do what they want to, and, because it's grown on the property, so to speak. But what's going to prevent any other cranberry bog owner from doing the same thing in the future, when there's all these special permit exemptions in our zoning bylaws because of that? And dispensary is actually where all the money is. So you might say this today, but in five, ten years, and even once and if it ever gets legalized for recreational use, I would probably gather that you would change your opinion on this and be here asking, maybe not even have to ask for a dispensary, because it would be your right under your exemptions. And so if anybody's here from the zoning, I would like to know how much, or have we even sought legal counsel? Can they actually do, and what's preventing five more bog owners from doing the same thing? We need to have some kind of control in the town.
I mean, I'll make one comment before maybe Jeff comments. The Board of Selectmen understand that our decision will be to support or non-opposition. It is with the understanding that all the other boards and committees in town would also have to sign on. One of them would be zoning. I think there probably are questions and issues. I spoke to the zoning officer earlier today, and I think he had some concerns about what Mr. Henry was talking about, and there's no doubt we'd have to go to town council and see. But it probably is beyond the purview of this committee to fully know whether zoning would be an issue or not, but surely the endeavor would have to fulfill all the other boards and committees and commissions to get all the permits necessary. I don't know if you want to say anything further, Jeff.
I'm, I'm sorry. The, the MGL forty A is a state statute, and it really just protects agriculture, but I don't think it, you know, I don't know, because you're allowed one, if there is one grow facility, the town, at their discretion, can say, hey, we've done our part, and we have one grow facility, and not write a letter of non-opposition or support, and that terminates the process for anybody else. And that includes the process where they come before the town for a dispensary. So you can say that, well, we have a grow facility, we've done our part in this process, and we don't need a dispensary in town, and they can turn it down, as well as they could with any other person that comes before them and asked for a disp, a grow facility in the town.
But I believe that's if you're in a business district. Well, you have a lot of exemptions, you can see them actually in the bylaws, that special permit exemptions are pretty large, and...
The RMD process, though, you can't, you can't get licensed from the RMD to produce a facility that grows medical marijuana without their consent. And to get their consent, they have to write a letter of non-opposition or a letter of support. Otherwise, it doesn't happen.
Do you need consent for your cranberry bogs?
No, it's not registered, it's not...
But it's agricultural.
It is, but it's not regulated by the DPA.
The difference here is the Department of Public Health oversees registrations of these RMDs, registered marijuana dispensaries. There is an application process that you must follow, and you must have every, every step approved. There's a three-phase process, a third phase, which is called the siting profile, requires that you submit a letter of support or non-opposition from the town for, for the location where you plan to cite your, your grow and your dispensary, two separate letters. If you don't have that letter, you cannot get your RMD approved by the state. It's a mandatory component of the application. So this is very different than, than opening a cranberry bog.
Just another question then, how up and at, but that's because right now it's just medical marijuana, but if and when it becomes legal, will you need to do that?
Very likely, yes. I mean, that would be, that would be up to the regulatory agency that oversees legal, legal marijuana, but that is fairly standard. I mean, we work on this, I work on this issue with folks across the country in small countries. I work on this issue with folks across the country in small towns and large cities, and demonstrating municipal approval is virtually always a component to state application for any kind of cannabis license, cultivation, processing, dispensing, otherwise.
It's okay. People that haven't asked questions, one more there, and then I think each of the selectmen will get a chance at a question.
Hi, Chris Howesley, Ring Road. I'm a little confused about Selphim's. Maybe you can straighten it out. You're talking about the grow facility, and then there's a lot of concern about a dispensary, okay? And the idea is that, no, we will never do a dispensary, we would never do that to Plington, it's going to affect the town adversely. I'm not getting the big difference between a grow facility, how that's a good thing, and it's going to be good for the town, but a dispensary, that's really bad, we would never even think about doing that.
That's not what I said, actually.
That's the impression I'm getting from the people.
And I don't mean to, you know, you have your own interpretation of what I say. But all I'm saying is that for me...
Well, you said you go to great lengths to prove that you would never put a dispensary in.
Yeah, because that's my family farm. I don't want a dispensary on my farm.
Exactly, but a grow farm's not a problem, no.
One is a retail facility. At a retail facility, you have a lot of people coming in and out every day. A grow facility, nobody goes in and out of that facility, other than the very few, the small number of employees who are licensed to operate there. So, there's no in and out traffic.
I think you're more concerned about people coming in and out that aren't retail customers coming to buy a product. They might be people visiting your farm to maybe make a withdrawal from neighboring towns where a dispensary, I'm pretty sure, is going to be there to pay and buy, and they're not going to be hiding who they are or sneaking in the back way. I'm seeing the opposite you're seeing. I'm seeing the dispensary being a very well-regulated, routine sort of thing, where a grow farm might be something a little bit harder to protect and control.
I think Chris can answer that. If the checks and balances that states put forth in the grow facility, you know, I'll let Chris.
Yeah, I mean, they require an incredible level of security for either the dispensary or the cultivation facility. All of this has to be approved as part of the application process, and then post-application, you have to go through a total architectural review and a security review with the Department of Public Health. They have to sign off on all of your security plans. I mean, we've worked on these facilities around the nation. These are some of the most secure facilities you can imagine. And in fact, what we typically find is, once they're operational, the towns almost uniformly say, this is by far the safest facility in our town.
Okay, so, an incredible amount of security, the safest facility in town because of security. This all centers around that one metal building we're talking about. What about the security, the incredible security that might be needed for surrounding neighbors, for surrounding schools? What's your solution to that?
I mean, part of what you typically do for these facilities is you have cameras around the perimeter of a facility, which are being monitored at all times.
What about our neighborhood?
What he's trying to say is, we understand the building is secure.
No, 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 I'm talking about the perimeter of the property.
Right, 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 right. I'm not talking about your property.
It's your property, your building. It's not him and I.
This is a residential neighborhood. The only access to this land is through a residential neighborhood surrounded by houses. What upgraded security are they going to receive?
You have camera systems that can see. Obviously, you have to be looking at somebody's...
Of your property. I'm not talking about your property. I'm talking about the neighborhood.
No, I'm talking about any potential entry point onto the property.
Okay, the cameras are mounted where in the neighborhood to protect it.
Yes, you have cameras surrounding the facility that are...
Right, you're not answering my question. You're avoiding my question.
No, I'm answering your question.
This is the facility. I'm not talking about the facility. I'm talking about the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood, which is the only access point to this area. What are you doing to protect that? What increased security is in place for that?
And I've been trying to answer the question.
No, you've said this facility every single time. Go ahead.
I feel like I continue answering the question, and every time I start, I get interrupted here.
Okay, well, go ahead and see if you can answer that one.
I think I can answer that. It's going to be our pollution partner. That's the security that you're going to have, and that's all you're going to have. It's not enough.
So, no increased security. Is that the answer?
No. I've already said you're going to have cameras looking outwards, down the road, you can see, well, down the road in each facility. If there's any entry point onto a facility, you have cameras positioned there outside.
This can be pursued further when we get to the comments section. Dominique, and then the selectmen, and then we'll see where we're at.
Dominique Sanson, Two Ring Road. I guess my question is more to the people objecting. What kind of threat do they think is going to exist that will endanger their homes?
Marijuana is the number one illicit drug in the United States. So, the people who are interested in getting it are going to be gangs who are going to be firearm number...
This is a grow facility.
Firearm number up for this one, it's going to be better armed.
If I really love canned corn, I'm not going to go to the cornfields in Kansas and loot them.
Right, you're not, because it has no cash value.
I'm going to go to the place where I would probably, hopefully, legally obtain that because I have a prescription at the dispensaries. This is a grow facility.
We're not concerned about the legal people.
No, are we concerned about the medical use of marijuana?
The houses all around his property are off the road.
In the woods.
So, your cameras are not going to be able to see those houses. People come in and can't get into your facility, decide to go into somebody else's house.
Okay, people, one question at a time. Madam, do you want to put that in the form of a question? Jeff can answer it. We'll get to the comment portion after that.
Yeah, you're talking about the cameras and the security, and I, believe me, I've got a very open mind when it comes to what you're growing. But my concern is very much like this. I live across the street from you. It will bring another element of people into the town. Most of us work. We're not at home all day.
I understand...
Who's going to protect our houses?
I understand your concern, but they're not going to break into your houses to get anything. The facilities that we provide, their security basically is an impediment to anyone that would try and procure, you know, you have to realize that there's plants in all different stages that have basically no value. There is a set aside, like a vault system, where any product that gets processed that would have value gets put. But it's only there for a short period of time, and then it goes to dispensaries. So, it's the dispensaries that hold the inventory. The grow facility really only grows the plants. You know, they do, there is a limited amount of product in the facility, but it's not a high target, it's not a valuable thing to go for because most of the facility is plants that are in immature stages and don't have any value.
Well, they do get immaturity eventually.
Sure.
My question, other facilities, grow facilities that have developed in other towns, has there ever been a study about what kind of, maybe there's an increase in crime or in the area that that...
They've been murders.
You know, I mean, it is a concern.
There has been robberies at grow facilities.
And murders.
And what kind of studies can you show us that will make us feel more secure?
Yeah, we'll follow up.
Your facility?
Yeah, we have information from the Police Association and the Rand Corporation. And they've done a lot of work on it, and, you know, the whole idea of having an extremely secure facility is, it's an impediment to somebody wanting to break in because, number one, the value of what they're going after, you know, CVS...
I'm not concerned with the value of what they're going at. I'm very comfortable with the fact that you guys are going to have a very secure facility. It's all around the facility that I'm concerned about.
But the only reason they would try to go to the facility would be to obtain something that has value.
And if they can't get that, what do they do?
If there's very little value there, then they're not going to try it. It's just not...
The DPH regulations, though, are specific about how you transport your product. It's got to be in an unmarked car, you have to use random roads, random times that you take it off the property. So, the people who live at Two Ring Road will have the opportunity to have these cars drive by their house. When you pull out of your driveway, what are your choices? You go left, or you go right into Kingston? Then you either take a left at the Denit to go down Preston Street. I mean, DPH is worried about people hijacking your product, and they have, like, nine different regulations that you have to comply with to transport your product. That's the safety issue.
And those vehicles that are bonded, that are traveling on those roads, are traveling on all of the roads. You know, the ones in Franklin will travel through whatever dispensary to wherever, they're going to be using all the roads in all the towns.
There's not that many roads in Plington around where we live.
Okay, folks, we're going to let the selectmen have a chance at a couple of questions, and then I think we can go into a comment period. Colleen, do you want to go first?
I have a couple of questions. First would be, what is the timing of this? I mean, when would we need to make a decision?
So, right now, we're in what's called the MOP, essentially Phase 2 of the application process, and we expect it'll be another probably 45 to 60 days before we have an invitation to submit the sighting application. At that point, as part of the sighting application, it would require the letter. So, there's a couple of months or so before that section of the application would be required to be turned into DPH.
At this point, I'm not for or against it. I'm still forming an opinion. I would like it to be clear that the selectmen does, the board does have the option of writing a letter of no support, and that would shut down any project that came up in the town. So, the next person who came along and said, oh, we already have one, we're not supporting this, and that would shut it down in the state's eyes?
That's correct. You cannot submit that application without, nobody else would be able to submit an application without the letter of support or non-opposition.
Okay. And then, speaking to other people who have been near, friends who are growing this, they have said that there's an extreme odor involved. How do you deal with that? How do you deal with the other pollution issues that are concerns of the people?
Couple of things. One is, our grow facility, as far as the chemical process, our grow facility, our plan is to be organic growers. It's really one of the best ways to protect the medical aspect of it. Massachusetts has probably the most stringent testing methodologies out of all the states to make sure that there's a very clean and untainted product for their patients. And secondly, there's an odor control system that, so the way you smell is, the molecule has to enter your nasal cavity, and your olfactory systems have to be able to identify it. What these systems do is they're put at the exit point of where the ventilation system works, and they actually, there's a misting component that's biodegradable. And that pulls that scent chemical out of the air prior to it exiting the building. So, they're used all over the country, and they have excellent...
Culture industry.
Yeah, they're not just used in this industry, there's, you know, because there are odor issues associated with lots of types of products, and they are nuisance for people.
When set up properly and having a heavily regulated environment, you can stand outside the building and you won't smell anything.
Do you know that for sure?
Yes.
Have you been to a popcorn? Has Jeff been to a popcorn?
Me? Geez, you know, I haven't.
So, how can you say what you're saying?
About what?
I have family in California, and I have family in Colorado.
Yeah.
And they have all these great systems next to, you know, two towns over from where they live in California. You can smell it.
I think they probably don't use a suppression...
And it's a thousand feet from an elementary school.
I think they have a suppression system that isn't... The one that they're talking, the one that we have proposed for use is, was designed in...
It's Maricopa. Where is that system being used now, Jeff? Is there some way we can call them or...
Yeah, absolutely. I can give you the webpage, and we can talk about it. You know, I want you guys to be happy, and I want to...
I'm not happy. I get that right now. Can I just ask one more question?
Why don't you hold on just a bit so we can get through the others? Do you?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
This is legal in Massachusetts. It's still illegal federally. How are you handling your money if you can't deposit it in a federally insured bank? How does the town get its money from you? What happens if the federal government comes along and says, hey, you guys, you, the town of Plington, got money from a product that is illegal. We want it back.
I think Chris can speak more. Sure. So, the Treasury Department last year released, and Justice Department, released co-memos that do allow banks to do business with medical cannabis businesses that are licensed by a state agency. They have to review the application that's submitted to the state, they have to review the policies and procedures that have been submitted to the state, they have to file a report with the federal government quarterly. They actually created a specific category of what they call SARs, suspicious activity reports, specific to state legal cannabis businesses that these banks are required to file with consent quarterly, as I mentioned. And so, there are banks, there actually are banks in Massachusetts that will do business with state licensed businesses. So, having a bank account is not a concern. That is still somewhat of an issue with accepting credit cards from time to time, but not with having a bank account. So, as far as the ability to deposit money, deposit cash, deposit, I mean, a lot of transactions went to be debit cards in this business, that's not an issue. Paying the city, same thing. As far as the federal government goes, they've also, first off, issued a memo, it was issued by Deputy Attorney General James Cole in 2013, that laid out a set of conditions that businesses have to operate under in order to not be a target of federal investigation, federal enforcement. Those are fairly simple, or not simple, but they're fairly straightforward requirements. Don't be within 1,000 feet of a school, don't ascend anything across state lines, no firearms, no associated organized crime, et cetera. The U.S. Congress, over the last three years, has actually codified that into statute. So, it's no longer just the Justice Department directive to the federal prosecutors not to investigate these businesses, but Congress has attached a rider to the Justice Department Spending Reorganization Bill the last three years, which prohibits the Justice Department and the DEA from enforcing federal marijuana laws against businesses that are in clear and unambiguous compliance with state law and licensed by a state agency. So, even if there were some change in administration and the new Justice Department were to take a different approach than the current Justice Department has, they would actually be prohibited from spending money by law, by act of Congress, to interfere with a state licensed business. So, this is as legal as you can possibly get, licensed by the state government and the federal government. By statute, by law, it's not allowed to interfere with these businesses.
Okay. And then, my last thing would just be that there are some facilities already in place in the state. They're co-grow and dispensary facilities. I actually spoke with the police chief in Air today. It has not been in place for very long. He has said that, so far, so good. I would suggest that you contact some of these folks, get some testimonials, and try to alleviate the worries of the town. And we have 45 to 60 days to make a decision, and I'm going to think about it.
I do have a letter that shows which towns have issued dispensary licenses and grow facilities letters for support or non-opposition. I thought I'd give that to you tonight, because I know you have something that's important to have.
I just mentioned you, this is an exhaustive list, unfortunately, that there is no such thing as an exhaustive list. So, this is based on all media reports that we could find of any towns that have taken action, and I believe there's a few that may have been added to that just in the last...
That's very helpful. So, just a couple quickies. I mean, we've certainly heard a lot about the security issue, other quality of life issues. I think I heard you say there would be no odor. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. Similarly, there's been concern about noise, about light pollution, herbicide, fertilizer. Can you assure us on those as well?
You know, with my farm, and I've been particularly, the studies are about making sure, I work with the MDR. We installed pumps for our cranberry operation that are perfectly matched. They're tier three pumps. They provide, they put out the least amount of hydrocarbons that can possibly be released for that size engine, and they're called tier three. We also matched on pallets so that we had a perfect synergy between the amount of power that we're going to use and the pressure that we needed to run for our bogs. We also worked with the NRCS on, which is the Natural Resource and污化ation Service, on putting in pop-up heads that atomize the water and allow us to use, I think it's about a third less water than traditional impact heads. a third less water than traditional impact heads. We follow an IPM program, which is integrated, integrated pest management. And we grow outdoors, so, you know, there are components to the cranberry industry that we do have some controls that we have to use. And those are all regulated by the EPA. We turn our reports in. And we use a, we use a threshold, so we sweep each week. We sweep our bogs to determine what pests are there and that are problematic for our cranberries. And then, we treat only for those pests. And we do it with products that are put up by the ounce that break down in a four-hour interim that, you know, it, it's, it's a state-of-the-art process. The, the difference in the cannabis industry for us is, it's indoor and really none of the controls that we have to use for an outdoor crop, we have to use for an indoor crop. So, our plan is to grow, and the grower that we have hired is, you know, organic grower only.
So, and, and then briefly, light pollution and, and noise pollution?
I don't think that there's any noise associated with it that I'm aware of.
There's fans. It's all, it's an all-inclusive facility. There's, there's neither light nor noise.
And then, the light pollution, I would work diligently with anyone to make sure that, you know, that you didn't have, that you mitigated any light pollution that was
So, we'll go to Christine and then we're going to open it up for comments.
Okay, I had questions on the, the CMR. I get more time to read it. And so, you're not at Phase Two because you haven't received an invitation to submit an application yet, correct?
Uh, it's three.
You're already in Phase Two?
Uh, we've received an invitation to submit Phase Two.
You have received an invitation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, under, do you have it in front of you? I don't know if you know off the top you had, okay. Well, I'm looking at page eighteen. I'm going through the CMR. This, on page eighteen, letter F, is including any demonstration of support or non-opposition furnished, furnished by the local municipality, which is what you're looking for now.
That's part of the sighting profile, so that's phase three.
All right. You are required, as part of this application, to commit to your RMD location. So, where, where's the RMD going to be? You've said it's not going to be in Plimpton, but legally, you can't, you can't open a grow facility without an RMD.
Correct.
They're not a standalone activity. But you have to have a commitment for an RMD to have the grow facility. So, my concern is if you don't have a commitment for the RMD, then we're getting the horse in front of the wagon here, where you're looking for support from us, but you don't have commitment from another town for an RMD.
At this point, we're, we're in discussions with a number of towns for that.
Okay.
We can't speak, we can't mention the towns publicly, only because there's a, there's a lot of competition out there for these towns.
Okay.
And when a newspaper prints a story that they're in discussions with this town, all of a sudden, five other applicants show up there the next day. And that's just kind of the way that this, this process works. But no, we're in discussions with, with a handful of towns for where that RMD would be located. As you're well aware, none of those towns are Plimpton.
Okay.
And ideally, ideally, by the time, the, the sighting profile is due, we will receive a letter of support or non-opposition from one of those towns. Otherwise, we can't submit.
Right.
Even if you grant a letter of non-opposition or support for this facility, if they're not able to, to obtain a letter of support from another town for an RMD, you can't submit that sighting profile.
Right.
So, the app will never go through.
Okay. I just wanted everybody else to, to know that, too. Our bylaws do require, in the event you did want to do an RMD, you'd have to get a special permit, it'd have to be in the business district. I have questions about forty A, where this is so, this is quite different from a cranberry operation, where the, with forty A, the farming is a bog or, you know, a field, and the building is an accessory use. The building is going to be the primary use here. So, we still may need a special permit, and I'm not clear on that. I don't know, you know, I haven't gotten an opinion from council.
As far as I know, I don't think that the state, I think the state's pretty clear on the fact that they can be grown in an indoor building. They don't limit your usage or the how you grow. They don't really, they don't address that and don't, I don't think they have any reason to control that. So, if we were growing mums in a, in a greenhouse or in an indoor grow facility for some reason for particular plants, it's still agriculture clearly under the definitions in item one-twenty-eight and forty A.
Okay.
There's no
Well, I would just, I would want to get a clarification if, if, if it came to that. All right, so we did the RMD. All right. So, you, you do have the nonprofit organization in place?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Okay. And then, action on the Phase Two submission requires local support for the RMD, once again. All right, bear with me. I've got notes going in a couple of places here. The waste disposal, it did talk about waste disposal. That was on page thirty-one, where it looked like solid waste would be going into the dump. Would that be correct?
I have to be honest with you. I, I don't know what, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident that DPH has written the guide, a set of guidelines for the control of that product.
Oh, it would have to be, you know, just crushed.
It's rendered on use.
It's rendered on use.
You have, you're gonna mix it with either dirt or soil or sand or something. It has to be like three parts, three parts dirt, one part product. It's, it's, yeah. And then, and then it can go in trash bags, and it's, it's completely unusable.
Okay.
There's also very little, I should also mention, there's very little byproduct because of the, because of the processing
Okay.
aspect of this. Most of the, what would be considered byproduct was trimmed, stalks, or, that's actually run through extraction, an extraction process. And what's left at the end of it is virtually nothing.
Okay.
It's unusable.
All right. Because, yeah, it does say disposed of in a solid waste management facility that holds a valid permit issued by the DEP or by an appropriate state agency. So, I think it probably could go.
Yeah, it goes to them, they
Okay. Let's see. Page thirty-eight talks about security. Okay. That you would need a duress alarm, a panic alarm, and a holdup alarm, and they would need to be connected to local public safety or law enforcement authorities. So, they would need, they would be responding to you for, for any of these type events or if, if there was a break-in. Correct?
Yeah, I think that's pretty much very similar to any business or home.
Okay.
If you, if you have your home alarmed, it'd be the same thing.
Okay.
Well, there, there often can be a, a security company in, in between there. And then, and that's, and that is always done in conjunction with the police department. So, really, it's whatever the police chief for the police department would be most comfortable with, whether they would rather the security folks get the call first, or whether they would then go into the, to the police department. That's really a conversation for the security department and the, and the police department. But that's, they always
So, you would have a private security?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right. But it looks like there are incidents, basically it's inventory and, you know, if you had issues with any employees, where law enforcement would have to be involved with that as well. You'd have to notify us if, you know, there was product that disappeared or, you know, you know what the CMR says. All right. And then, lastly, let's see. All right. The, the grounds for denial. We had All right. The, the conduct or practice of the RMD event detrimental to the safety, health, or welfare of the registered qualified patients, personal caregivers, or the public. That we demonstrate a lack of suitability. I'm not going to say responsibility, because I don't think that that's, I'm not saying you're not responsible, but questions about suitability. And then, I think that that was it. My concern was that there's going to be additional costs of, with the police department associated with your facility. And I asked the chief to come up with a figure, what he thought that he would need in order to be, to have the appropriate coverage, and the chief can speak to this, for, to address this facility. So, chief, can I turn it over to you?
I think, you know, I'm going to try to be brief. I know everyone's been here for a while. Hi, Jeff. I think, almost off the top, any type of incident at this facility would be a significant incident. We're a small community with a small police department. At best, we have two offices on duty at any given time. So, any type of alarm or any type of panic alarm response is going to take the police coverage away from the town. If we were to add bodies, if we could get additional bodies out of this, one body would surpass the amount of tax revenue we're looking at from, from this facility. So, to outfit, train, and pay an officer, an officer's going to make more of a second year than fifty thousand dollars. So, that's pretty much what that comes down to. If, if you figure in initial training, outfitting, you're probably talking sixty-eight thousand dollars. Since I have the floor, I'm going to cover a couple of other things. Folks, I think everyone in here has to ask themselves, do you really want this in your community? Do you? Is, I, I urge the board to oppose this. I, I think this is really inconsistent with our community values here in Plimpton. It's in stark contrast to what we teach our children in schools to stay away from drugs. And I think the town's sending the wrong message if it allows this type of facility. I understand in the law, we have to provide an area if someone were to do a registered marijuana dispensary, and that is zoned in our bylaw up on Main Street here, Paul Road and Main Street. And I really would ask everyone to keep that in consideration. And the last thing I'd like to add, I think Colleen stole a little bit of my thunder talking about federal law. This could compromise Plimpton's ability and any type of federal funds in the future, grant money or anything like that. Massachusetts has approved medical marijuana, but the federal government still hasn't. We've, I, I know the gentleman with all the answers up there could probably say something to oppose what I'm saying. The fact of the matter is, we don't know who's going to be our next president. Everything could change again. So, I really ask the Board of Selectmen to carefully consider this. And I really ask that you oppose this. I just don't think it's a good fit for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Thanks, chief. I had one more thing that I wanted to say. We had talked about the right-to-farm bylaw. And the right-to-farm bylaw allows agricultural uses and related activities to function with minimal conflict with the butters and town agencies. And then, in Section Three, it talks about incidental noise, odors, dust, and fumes associated with normally accepted agricultural practices. I don't believe this was, is a normally accepted agricultural practice. So, I don't think, you know, citing the right-to-farm bylaw is really appropriate for this venture.
Christina, just like the way you could clarification. I think it says right-to-farm practices, not right-to-farm products. So, the right-to-farm practices are, as an agriculturist, what you do, how you till the land, how you irrigate your crop. It isn't, that isn't saying, that's not talking about a particular crop.
Well, that's the right-to-farm declaration.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying that it says right-to-farm practices. And those practices are common practices that you use in farming operations, best farm practices.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. And it doesn't really address what the crop is.
Right. But this does say to, where is it again? It was normally, gosh, I can't even find it. I don't want to start beginning. It is hereby determined that whatever impact may be caused to others through the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming to the neighborhood community and society in general.
And it talks about, it's about the practice, I think. Not about the crop.
No, but it does say normally in minimal conflict. So, it's, and this is outside, in my opinion, the, the realm of that.
They're still referring to the crop.
Okay, sure. All right. Well, I'm going to state again that I, I think this is going to be cash flow negative for us, and I don't support it.
Okay. What we're going to do is we'll go into a comment phase for a while. We've been here for an hour and ten minutes. I, I hope we can quit by eight-thirty, or those that want to leave by then, certainly by quarter of nine. I think in this phase, I, please direct your comments mainly to the Board of Selectmen. We are going to confront the decision on this. I think this is probably, in the two and three-quarters years I've been a selectman, going to be the hardest decision we have to make, besides the dog, dog complaint next week. And I, I think you have a group of selectmen that are incredibly careful and thoughtful and want to make the right decision. And we certainly seek your input. I would just ask that people in the comments section be as brief as possible so that everyone has a chance to speak. I, I saw Susan's, or, sir, you first, and then Susan, and then over there, and then we'll go from there.
Just clarification for everyone here. The decision, yea or nay, lies with the board. This is not something that's going to end up at town meeting in May.
That's correct. But the decision that's going to be made by this board at some point is our opposition or lack of opposition. They still have all the stuff to go through in, in terms of permitting in town. I think there's a real question about zoning that's going to come up, and it's going to be a challenge. But, yeah, this isn't a town meeting thing. Okay. Susan?
I actually have a question on a comment. Can I, can I, someone just, I understand from the chief's point of view that adding an officer costs a lot of money. Where is the revenue that comes in? Where is that number coming from? That they're saying is going to come from the front.
Jeff? It, it's, it's part of the community hosting agreement that we've put forth to the town. And it's a, based on the amount of cannabis grown. And we think by year three that, I think our proposal is ten thou, is ten, ten dollars a pound. And we think that for the supply and the dispensaries that are going to be required, that it'll be, it'll top off somewhere around four thousand pounds, which would be forty thousand dollars to the town, plus whatever the infrastructure, whatever the taxes are on the infrastructure themselves.
So, that number changes as you're proposing?
Yes, that's exactly.
Okay. Madam?
Evelyn Dunbar, Twenty-Eighth Ring Road. For the forty-five years that David and I have been living on Ring Road, there have been many illegal crops of marijuana that have been, that have grown between Main Street and Ring Road. They've been large, small, they've been disrupted, but the police know this very well. And he's shaking his head yes. And it was, as far as I know, nobody was murdered, nobody was held up or anything like that happened. I'm not necessarily a proponent of this, but I would like you to think about the fact that this has gone on a long time and people knew about. If we knew about it, everybody knew about it. So, and, and people I know here know this. Let's sort of redirect our thoughts here. Thank you.
Mrs. Duhail?
But everybody will know about this product.
Yeah.
Not only in this town, but in the state.
It's my turn. You know, I'm not disputing the medical benefits of marijuana and the fact that Massachusetts has passed it. I would like to remind people that marijuana is classified by the federal government as a Schedule I drug. The other drugs in that category are heroin, LSD, musculin, mushrooms, bath salts. What am I forgetting? Did I say heroin? Quaaludes. So, that if the regulations did change at the federal level, that's the kind of drug that we would be growing in our backyard. I believe that people have a right to use their property and develop it in any way they can. My question, like, I think a lot of people's questions are, is Jeff's backyard the right place for it? You know, if it's going to be a commercial industry, isn't that why we built an industrial park in Plimpton to put, to have businesses go to the industrial park and be developed there? I do worry about the safety issues. I do worry about my property values. It's, it's my retirement, and I can't imagine if that's devalued, you know, moving in with my siblings. So, those kinds of issues, I don't think you can reassure me on. I don't think you can reassure me that my property value won't be affected. I don't think you can reassure me that my safety won't be impacted. And finally, I And finally, I mean, I moved to Plimpton because of the nature of the town, and I've said this to many people, you know, when you think of Walpole, you think of the prison. And do we want people to think of Plimpton and associate it with pot farms? And I think that's what's going to happen, and I just don't want that to be the legacy of the town.
The lady right behind, Mrs. Doyle.
So, I'm Pam Sheehan. I live at 5 Cranberry Knoll. I moved here six months ago, and I came from Wareham. So, I know most of you have lived in this town for a very long time, and you haven't been exposed to the amount of drugs and whatever ridiculousness goes along with that that I have. I coached basketball for eight years while I was there, and the drug problem in Wareham is rampant, frankly. And it all started out with folks, you know, smoking pot. My concern is I have two kids at Sacred Heart High School in Kingston. They already know about this pot farm. So, to say that nobody knows about it, and nobody's going to try to break in, and it's going to be super safe, I don't buy it. If the teenagers at a Catholic high school know about it, you know for sure Silver Lake and Halifax. It's the teenagers that are going to break into this thing. It's not some 35-year-old professional. And frankly, the $50,000 revenue, if you have people my age with kids, they're not going to want to move here. In fact, people with kids are going to move out. I have 22 kids in my tiny little neighborhood, and they're already saying if this thing goes through, they're going to look for other places to live. And that would just...I mean, to try to grow a town, you need young people, and you need kids to move in. You don't want people to be driven away by a bad decision.
Yes, sir.
Many years ago, many years ago, my brother started out smoking grass, which eventually led to higher and better and stronger drugs, and he's now buried up in Hillcrest. And for that reason, I'm negative on this particular venture. If Mr. Randall had decided to go with putting growing poinsettias or Easter lilies, I'd be right next to him if I put them on the foundation, but not for cannabis.
Elizabeth?
I don't know where to begin. I guess we're the only people here that are sort of the lone wolves in favor of Mr. Randall's operation. I feel like we've been here...we're newcomers, been here about 18 years. I don't...we're on 2 Ring Road. I don't think it'll devalue our property. We've had a little look at your farm, drove up, rode around, because we'd like to see what's going on. And it's meticulous. I don't see that he has anything there that's in any way indicates a bad form, or I think he'd do a good job. And I can't see how it brings crime to the area, or more crime. I believe we've had a robbery already up at the gas station or something, and a gun was involved. We've been robbed. I know several other people that have been robbed. This is crime here, it's not new. I mean, it's happened without a marijuana farm. I mean, this is nothing new. And we have a friend here who's a detective, and he tells me that this town has an epidemic of drugs right now. There's no farm here, and this is heroin we're talking about. I mean, people need to open their eyes. There's a lot of drugs around. This is the least of our problems. And again, I'll say, you know, I've smoked marijuana, probably most of the people in the room have. My kids aren't drug addicts. Maybe alcohol's problem, that's more to worry about than, you know, than marijuana. But I'm just a little horrified. I mean, 20 years ago, I didn't hold the computer in my hand. Times change. And to me, growing medical marijuana is compassionate. It's not something that you tell your kids is a terrible thing. It's all in how we word it to our children. Either we pass on our prejudices, or we tell our children something different. Okay? That's it.
Gail?
Hi, Gail Knight, when it touches it, road. I would just like to second what that lady said. I have kids in school, but by no stretch do I want them to smoke pot. They turn 21 and it's legal? That's a different matter. I'm not moving out of town. I have...it's all about how it's carried out. So, if it's secure, if you can make the people in the neighborhood feel secure, because I do think they really have a right to be heard, more than anybody else here. But I'm not moving out of town, and it would not dissuade me for an instant. Medical marijuana, I do think it's in keeping with our town. I think that it's medical. I think you need a prescription, and I think that its health benefits are real. And I do think times move on, and I think we're in the middle of that right now.
Madam?
So, I'm from Fort Cresson's Landing. I'm 21, so I just graduated from...so, like, a few years ago. From here, my classmates, they do a lot and go to a lot of stents to get different drugs. So, I'm concerned about the safety, but my concern would be, a lot of teenagers, high school students, maybe even college students who commute to school, trying to get into the facility, alarms going on, and then the police department having to respond, and drawing away those officers from other issues in town where it could cause a problem because now two officers are responding to an alarm, and maybe across town there's another big issue. My concern would be the safety in that, and just a lot of the younger generations trying to get in there to see what they can possibly get away with. And I love Plimpton, it's a really small town. I don't think...I'm for medical marijuana. I'm not for a brewery or dispensary being in a small town because it's very residential. Prefer to see it in a town that's larger, where it's maybe not near residential homes.
Sir?
Ebbin Nasserallah, Maple Street. How are you? As a lot of you people know, I've been in town many years, over 35 years, and been familiar with many of the boards, and actually been five boards here. And you people have a huge challenge ahead of you. I can remember as a young boy growing up in Halifax, the selectmen had to make a decision on how to reprimand a farmer because one of his cows got loose. But like a lot of people have said here tonight, times have changed. As far as I'm concerned, the positive part of this whole application is that, number one, I am a farmer, and I have been for 40 years. A lot of the chemicals and things that we use on fields far outweighs what Mr. Randall's going to be doing, but also in turn, I know Mr. Randall. I've known him for 35 years, and he's a class act. The positive side of all of this is that he is a resident of this town. Thank God for that, as opposed to having somebody come from out of state with a pocketful of money that can just railroad their way in here and do it and do as they please. This gentleman is a class act. I've worked closely with him in the cranberry business. I've assisted him in the cranberry business. We've worked side by side on other issues. He's the type of gentleman that would do what he says and says what he'll do. There's no question, it is a controversial issue. There's no question that Southeastern Mass is probably one of the largest users of drugs in the United States. It's been noted that Southeastern Mass has the higher...the highest drug rate in all of the United States. That is the times. That's what we all live with. And as far as the police go, I have all the confidence in the world in our police department, as small as it is. If an issue arises, I know that they get assistance from other towns. It's not just strapped to Plimpton. They'll get assistance in that respect. But the thing that I feel positive about is two things. One is it is Mr. Randall, who I've known for 30 years and I can vouch for, and if he says he's going to do something and he's going to try to protect us, he will do it. And secondly, and most importantly, is I have a daughter that has terminal cancer and has a medical marijuana cut. And for those people that it affects, it's a godsend. I don't see this being an issue where a lot of people from different surrounding towns are going to try to break in. I mean, that's happening everywhere anyway. I don't feel that that will impact the town. But again, ladies and gentlemen, you people have a tremendous decision to make, and I am just letting everybody know here that I am in favor of what he's trying to do.
Thanks. Sir?
Hi, Chris Halli again, Ring Road. Cheat sheet on my hand here. So, a couple points. I got the feeling from you guys, you were asking about the ability to write a letter to not recommend future ones if you decided to let this one go through. I got the feeling that you...well, in Jeff's word, done our part with maybe one of these, and then you'd be able to stop all the ones from coming to town, and everybody would be okay with that. So, I'd just like to bring up the location. If Plimpton, if the selectmen decide that Plimpton is the town that should have a marijuana grow farm in it, is this really the best location that we want to have this? It's a residential neighborhood. There's really only two access points to his property. You might not know about the second one. The first is his driveway, which will obviously be under surveillance with cameras. The second is an access road from Rogers Bog halfway down Ring Road that goes behind all the lots, all our houses, and then it goes right to his property. His horses use it all the time from his farm to go out, ride around the bog, get access to Ring Road. So, there's a security impacted, as some other people might not realize, that's not just going down his driveway. If there's someone that wants to pay him a visit and not be known, they're not going to go down the driveway. They're going to park over the bog, take some ATVs or oil-drive vehicles, and go down that access road. So, I just want people to be aware of that. So, also, like I said, the school is within a quarter mile of this facility. I know the police have done a lot of work with DARE and drugs with the schoolchildren. Are we really sending them the message that marijuana is bad for you, drugs are bad, when they might be able to smell the facility operating within a quarter mile? I mean, out at recess, when a new student asks, hey, what's that weird smell? I mean, do we want the answer for a teacher or a student to be, that's the town's pot farm? Disregard what the cop said two days ago at the, you know, at the school meeting? It's just real mixed message there. So, if we are going to do this as a town, as selectmen, is this the right place for it? I don't think you can pick a worse place. It's a residential community, and it's right next to the school. It's actually adjacent. People talk about positives. Doesn't sound like it's a financial positive. Doesn't sound like it's going to be a security positive. Doesn't sound like it's going to be a positive as far as the way we're seen by other towns or other people, or people looking to buy houses. The only positive really is for Jeff. And finally, I would please ask you, as selectmen, to defer to the most qualified person to talk about security, which is the police chief. We have an expert in the front row, not an expert on Plimpton's security, not an expert on police, not an expert what's going to take to help secure the town with this new crop being grown here. So, I would really put a lot of weight into what he says, maybe more so than somebody that's worked in other towns, somebody that has...I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any...
That gentleman's had his hand up for quite a long time.
Yeah, absolutely, sorry.
Thank you. Frank Santoro, Ring Road. I am in the bar. My wife and I chose Plimpton because we were looking for a right-to-farm community, and we're probably the newest members of the community. We've only been here two months. And we chose Plimpton because of its love for agriculture. We chose it because of its love for livestock and wildlife, and that's why we're here. And so, I would endorse any agricultural proposal, especially from what I've seen from my neighbor and the way he takes care of his bogs. And if it's a legal crop, I have no way of not endorsing it, and so therefore, my wife and I fully support what Mr. Randall is trying to do, and we would hope that the community does as well. Thank you.
Sir?
Could I just make one request from the board? This is an article in the Holliston Reporter. I think Holliston is what a town up near 495 up that way. In the article, it says that there are three towns in Massachusetts that have a marijuana farm. One is Amesbury, one is Brockton, and one is Franklin. The one in, let's see, the one in Franklin is located on a 200-acre industrial park called Hopping Brook Industrial Park. The one in Amesbury is actually, the article says that there's a second application for a pot farm. There's already one existing there now. The second application, the group is known as Green Heart Health and Pharmaceuticals, and they're looking at a property at 10 Industrial Way in Amesbury. The property is at an industrial park sandwiched between Interstate 495 and Monroe Street. What I was going to ask you is, maybe we can learn from these two communities why they chose to put the pot farm in an industrial setting and not in a neighborhood. It would make sense to learn from their experience why they've chosen to do that in that setting and not put it in a residential setting. The Brockton one, I couldn't get an address for, but we all know Brockton is an urban setting, so I don't know, you know, what the address of that is. But clearly, the two other towns who have a farm have put theirs in an industrial park.
All right, a couple last comments, and then I think we'll give Jeff a chance to...let's see, who hasn't spoken? Jack?
Jack O'Leary, 71 Ring Road. Thank you for serving the town and having us here, and thank you very much for getting the word out so everybody would know what was going on. We appreciate that. I had a couple comments and a question. First of all, I just want to mention, I mentioned it to you privately, but I just want to mention it to the public, that I had the pleasure of having a meal with a selectman in another town where this sort of facility is being proposed. And he was very excited about it because he saw it as a revenue-enhancing measure for his town, and he made a...he wanted...made a point to me. He said he wanted me to pass it on to you, was that be very careful that in any revenue-sharing agreement, it's based on gross revenue and not net revenue, because a net...an accountant could conceively make the net revenue look zero, and the town wouldn't get the benefit that it thought it was going to get. I think the police chief's comments are well-taken. I'm familiar with the area in general. There's also a path that leads from the power lines, and I believe it heads right into the back of this farm, too. And as the other gentleman made a comment, people who want to do bad things are going to do it through a back-back pathway, where they think they won't be observed, and that makes the police department's job a little more difficult. And the question I had is, it sounds like at various times you're talking about either two possible decisions or three, one of which is a letter of support, one of which is a letter of non-opposition, and possibly a letter of opposition. And my question is, is there any effect from doing nothing? It's essentially giving it a pocket veto. That might be an option you could consider. Many zoning decisions anyways require action, but I'm not sure if this does. And my reason for bringing that up is, I don't know how or whether these decisions could be appealed. The applicant could appeal it on some grounds which may or may not be valid, and I just want to see if...urge you to consider those options and see if there's a...you know, think carefully about it, because you've heard a lot of input here, and obviously, we need to...will make you up your own minds. But if a decision could be made that couldn't be appealed, like not acting, that might be something you'd consider. Make your job easier. Thank you.
Okay, so, a couple more. The lady behind, and then the lady in pink, and then I think we'll probably...I'm sorry. And I guess, Kimberly. So, those four, and then we'll wrap it up. So, please, yes.
A couple of things. I'd like to say, you know, with the proximity to the school, I think it's naive to think that it's not going to impact the property values of the homes in the town, because I know, as a parent, it's not something I would choose to live in a community that, you know, if there's a pot farm. So, I think we all need to recognize the fact that if this goes through, it's probably going to negatively impact the homes, the value of all the homes in the town. And the other thing I'd like to mention is, I'd like to ask the selectmen, I don't even know if this is possible, but is it possible to put this to a vote in the town? And I think if it were to go to a vote, that it's very important that it not be a legalization issue. I think people feel very strongly on one side about pot being legal or not legal, and I don't think that's the issue here at all. I think the issue is whether we want a marijuana facility or dispensary in our community, and I think it's an important enough issue that the townspeople should have the right to vote on it. So, I would like to ask you to consider, you know, allowing the people to vote. So I would like to ask you to consider, you know, allowing the people to vote.
Could I speak to that?
Okay, quickly.
Sorry, my name is Jean Cohen, and I live on Buttonwood Drive, and I'm a realtor. And I'm a realtor here in this town, in many of the South Shore towns. And there's no way to know, and I'm not for this or against this, I'm just speaking to that point. There's no way to know whether or not the property values would be affected one way or another, because there are people that feel one way or another. And so there are houses around the gun club on Upland, and if I have an open house at a listing there, and they're shooting away on a Sunday afternoon, there are some people that go, great, I'm getting my license, and there are some people that run out of the house. And so I may implore you, as residents of this beautiful town, I can tell you the one detriment we have are the junkyards, in people's yards, that are causing the problems with the value that we currently have in town. And I know that's not on the discussion ballot today, but I just thought I would pipe up and speak to that. We don't know whether this would or would not impact the value.
In Colorado and other towns, it's very obvious that it's negatively impacted partner marijuana as well.
Okay, well, that's something to look into, so I just thought I'd...
So, yes, ma'am.
Dawn Easton Bailey, 108 Ring Road. And I am gravely concerned about this. My property abuts the path that you were talking about and the land. And I am not questioning your integrity at all. My husband has worked with you and found you to be a very nice fellow, but this is very alarming to me, and I certainly didn't move here thinking that I was going to be near a pot farm. And people are talking about not worrying about criminals. You should not accept that as something that's okay, and I am going to tell you, it invites it. I worked in Brockton for 15 years. I love that city, the city of champions, but they have a problem that I don't want to share with them. I don't care if people already think there's a heroin problem in town. I don't think we need to have that to invite what other element might come with it. And I know people are going to walk through the woods, I know they're going to look for it, I know it's going to cause me trouble. I have little kids at my house sometimes, I have dogs, you know, it's alarming. And I am gravely, gravely concerned.
Mr. Russo?
Sorry, just a minute, a couple other people.
I'll be right back. I'm just... Mike, I, you know, I know it's a very compassionate thing for...
Have her say her name and where she lives.
Can you give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Susan Hayes of Fort Cushman Landing. And I know it helps a lot of people with cancer. My concern is that being in a backyard of our elementary school, and I know it's called cannabis, it's called marijuana, it's being referred to as pot, pot in the paper, and it's going to be quite comical for people to be like, ah, Plimpton, the elementary school's got a pot farm in their backyard. And that's, that's kind of concerning, and that's, I didn't move to Plimpton for that, and I love Plimpton. I love this small town, we all know each other, it's quite comical to be in the center with a chicken in the middle of the road, you can't go anyplace. And people know us for that. It's a farm community, we have all horses. But it will probably change to the town with a pot farm in the backyard of an elementary school. And that's, I don't have an opinion about it being grown or used or whatever, but that's where my thoughts are going, is that it's right there in the backyard of the school. And I think that's something to think about, is just, you know, where Plimpton's going to be known, that, instead of the farms.
Kimberly, and Kathy, and then Jeff, and...
Let's not fool ourselves, people. This is not an agricultural issue. If you can grow this federally prohibited substance in a building, in some industrial park, that ain't farming. We're a dead community, just say no.
I'm Palmer Road, and I'm not talking about this growth facility, I'm talking about fear and reason. And I don't grow children, I don't have children, and I, I hope that you can accept that I do have an opinion, however, because I was a child once, and I grew up in Eastern Kentucky, where very similar to this town, and it's very, the communities are really strong, and we felt very far away from progressive things. I left there, and I realized that there was a world out, that wasn't just all bad, nor was it all good. And when I moved to Plimpton, I had in mind wonderful things too. I did not envision a liquor store at my gas station, because there weren't those where I was from. I didn't realize there would be a firearm store. However, when I lived in Eastern Kentucky, where there weren't those things, there was a whole lot of drugs and a whole lot of killings. In Plimpton, we have a lot of guns, and we don't have any burners. We have a lot of people on drugs, yet we don't sell opiates down at the corner. I'm just trying to show that there, these things aren't related. What our kids do has to do with education. When Aunt Myrtle gets cancer, you're going to want her to get some help. When your Aunt Myrtle gets something else, you're going to want her to have an opiate. But you don't teach your kids those things are okay out of context. I have one more point, and it's about using our police force. If a new family moves to town, and they have a drunk or a drug addict, or a sick person, or a sick child, that taxes our police department. We have no control over that. Any of our businesses that ring an alarm, our police have to go, and it takes them away from somebody else. We think we can only afford two policemen, three policemen, whatever we got, that's our lot in life. Bringing something that's progressive into this town will not ruin our lives.
Can I just clarify one thing about medical marijuana?
It might make it steeper, but it won't kill us, and it's out there in the world. I'll speak to that.
As a profession, I prescribe medication, and I just want to explain to you the medical marijuana process, which is, there are doctors in the state who are giving out medical marijuana cuts to anybody who has the cash to pay for it, so that people who need medical marijuana aren't the only people who are getting it. The law in Massachusetts, a 60-day supply of pot is 10 ounces of marijuana. If anybody smoked pot, that's a lot of pot to smoke in 60 days, which basically is going to mean, the people who have these marijuana cuts are now going to become drug dealers, because I work and wear them. They're all getting, they're all getting these marijuana cuts, and that's what they're going to do, they're going to sell it. And so it's not just a compassionate substance, it's already been abused. It's already, had I known it would have been implemented in this way, I never would have voted for it. I voted for it. I believe that it has really good use, but boy, the way the law is being implemented, it is going to be a nightmare. So it's not just people who are sick, because who's going to be getting this? It's going to be people who say, oh, I'm a little anxious, I can't sleep, and for $500 I get their medical marijuana cut and become the next drug dealer.
I think it's fairish to let Jeff have a couple last comments.
I just want to thank you all for being here, and for those of the people that offended my neighbors because they didn't come by and talk to you directly, I apologize. Chief, if there's, you know, issues with concerns about the amount of resources that you know that you need, I'd be more than happy to sit down and try and work on that with you, and come up with a solution for that, for you. As for my neighbors, I'll sit down with you, address your security concerns, and do it to the best of my ability, and hopefully we can come up with a satisfactory arrangement that works for everybody. And I just want to thank you all for your time and your input. Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much, everyone. I hope everyone has had it, feels heard. You have been heard, and I think the three of us have published our email, you have our phone numbers, we have quite a bit more wrestling to do, and I think we especially have to work with balancing the benefit to the town, the rights of individuals, with the overall well-being of the town. And I think, as I said, we take this very seriously. I think this is the toughest decision I'll have had to make, and I think we've come to no conclusion. I do very much appreciate the level of the discussion and the earnestness of everyone involved. And Susan, as always, will get the last word.
I can't, I can't help but, I'm on the line here. I just, I was looking while we're sitting here, and the price that, and this, I don't know, because this came off my phone, the price per pound, if this product is sold at is about $1,800 a pound, and I was just, my question to the town is, why would, if it's allowed to be here, why would we take $10 a pound as our share of the payment for a product that is hugely, that the volume you're talking about selling is millions of dollars. So that's just a financial wise question.
We fully understand that there would be, if we ever got to that point in negotiation, and I think Jeff's probably a pretty good negotiator, I hope we would find good negotiators for the town if we ever get to that point. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's a long evening, we appreciate you being here. Please continue the conversation.